Good day for us to meet, but due to the holiday, we're here on Tuesday, September 3rd at 6:30 PM. We are in the village hall as well as on Zoom. Zoom link is top of the agenda. We have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted and we'll start with a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next then, we have public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak on any subject. If you are from the public, we just ask that you share your name, your address, your municipality, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes in case we have a lot of folks who would like to speak. So with that, I'll be quiet. Anybody in the room or on Zoom can raise their hand. Okay. Next then is discuss and consider minutes from our village board meeting held on August 19th. Any questions, comments, edits in regards to the meeting minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
We have a motion second then. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Then we move right down into discuss and consider Corey Ridge Phase D agreement. Is that you, Rick, or Larry tonight?
Sure. This is just an update to the required improvements to school road to the previously approved agreement.
Okay. Any questions for Larry?
I'll make the motion to approve the Corey Ridge Phase D agreement as presented. Second.
We have a motion second then. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Then we move to new business. This is the annual review for village consultants and service providers. First up is general engineering services and Jim, you're on the Zoom. You can just unmute yourself and go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the building inspector for the Village of Cottage Grove. My name is Jim Trebien and I work with GEC. I believe the up to year-to-date permits that have been issued were distributed to the group. Little synopsis of that is to date, we have 25 new homes that are, have received occupancy or in the process of being built. We have a total for the year so far, year-to-date of 252 permits have been issued. That would include the 25 new homes. And I think new since last year, we've implemented an online building permit. We have a portal that's listed on, a link that's listed on the village website and I think has gone over very well. Kind of screenlines the process and contractors as well as individuals seem to enjoy that. And that'd be about all I would have, but I'm open to questions.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Any questions from board members? I'm literally hearing cricket. For those on the Zoom, there is cricket in the room. If they're not, then Jim, we can let you off the hook then.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next then, we have Rudabush, Tom and Kyle. And their commercial broker. You want to press the big, there you go.
Better?
Yes.
Perfect. Hi, everyone. My name is Kyle Adams. This is Tom Phillips. We're with Rudabush Commercial Investments. Good to see you all again and some new faces as well. Just by way of quick background, we're a commercial real estate brokerage agency. We're based out of Madison. We've actually had the pleasure of working with the Village of Cottage Grove for quite a number of years. Our history goes back to when the Commerce Park was first started. We have been the listing agent for the park all the way through selling all of the lots on behalf of the village. Way back in the day, we even served on the Economic Development Committee right before it became the CDA. So great history with the village. Currently, we're working with the village on some site acquisitions in to nine. And then, of course, if any questions come up generally with a commercial real estate background, we're always happy to help. So work very closely with Matt, Aaron, the entire team, and that's kind of the quick background that we have.
All right. Thanks, Kyle. Thanks, Tom. Any questions for Rudabush?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right. Then we'll move on to Ellers. Harry?
Good evening, everyone. Harry Allen with Ellers. I know you guys are more used to seeing Greg Johnson, but we do have two advisors that work on all of our clients and so I'm technically in the backup role. So I'm fully aware of what's happening with the village. I'm just not present at every meeting. But Ellers, we're a municipal advisory shop. So we have two offices. Main one is in Minnesota, but then we also have a second office just outside of Waukesha. So we help the village in all sorts of different ways right now. Pretty much anything financial related for local governments, we touch it in some way. So right now, we assist you with debt issuance and debt management. That's including now like arbitrage monitoring, investments of proceeds, things of that nature. We also assist the village with economic development. So whether that's TID creation, TID amendment, or going through and negotiating terms for a development agreement, kind of calculating out the impact of different incentive-type payments, anything of that nature, which includes annual reporting. So on an annual basis, we are updating these cash flows and giving you an idea of when these districts might be closing and what that impact could be to the village's overall tax rate and levy and things of that nature. We also assist with financial management planning. We'll touch on that service a lot more tonight. But on an annual basis, we do update the financial management plan for the village, which takes a five-year look at where your levy is going and kind of the different levers that you can pull to achieve the objectives that you want to. And then a newer service that we're assisting the village with now is on our utility side. So we do have a pretty strong sewer and water rate team at Ellers. And now we're getting involved at kind of looking at the sewer utility and where those rates need to be and where that utility is going. So if there are any questions for me, I'm happy to take those.
I just have one. The arbitrage, that's the first time I've heard that word used. Maybe others know what it means. Can you just?
Yeah. At a really high level, the idea is that as a unit of local government, you can borrow on a tax-exempt basis. And so back a few decades ago, governments would go borrow at a tax-exempt basis and then take those proceeds and park them in taxable-type investments because there's a difference in rate there. So you could borrow at a low rate and then earn a higher rate. So governments were just going out borrowing money and essentially treating that as income. And the IRS was like, no, 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 you can't do that. So now there's limitations on what you can earn on borrowed proceeds. So arbitrage is just, IRS has all these rules. You can only earn so, so much. So it's important to keep an eye on what your earnings are doing and if you owe any money to the IRS. So we track all that for you. Yep. Great question.
Any other questions? All right. Stay right there. Yeah. We're going to then move into reports from village boards, commissions and committees. First up is the Budget Review Committee. I'll do a quick synopsis and we'll turn it right over to Harry. So we met on Wednesday, August 28th, went through with Ellers and Cameron, budget review for three different scenarios, and we'll get to those this evening. Came up with actually a fourth scenario, blended one, which hopefully might be available this evening, but we'll see. The board then recommended that this board move forward with that, but that's with this board. So that's what we went through. We went through again the 2025 financial management plan. So, Harry, do you want to kind of walk us through all that?
Yeah. So we do have a presentation. Is there a way to put it on the screen or does everybody have it on their laptops?
It's best to put it on the screen so those that are on the Zoom can also view it.
Okay. Should I just join the Zoom meeting or?
Yeah, join the Zoom and then share a screen.
Gotcha. I can do that real quick. Or I'll need to get on the wifi too. Do you have a copy of the presentation?
Yeah.
I have a paper copy too, if anybody wants paper. Yep.
I think Cameron's got it for you.
Oh, does he? That'll work.
All right. Thanks, Cameron.
Perfect. So we'll go ahead and get started. I know you're still passing this around, but appreciate it. So we're going to talk about the financial management plan tonight. So what this is, is an annual update where we look five years back where the village has been as it relates to the levy and project that forward five years on the operating basis and then 10 years on your debt service. So this first slide here is just kind of walking through what we do. So we do a multi-year projection of the total village levy, looking at operations, capital and debt for the next five years, the all-in look. And then we determine the borrowing capacity and debt service levy for a 10-year window. And we ran three scenarios originally, and then we had a fourth scenario that was run based on Budget Committee's recommendation. And then we examine the ability to maintain services and capital investment under the rules that are prescribed to you by the state. So really looking at the levy limits. This next slide, looking at the findings of the SMP update. So anytime that the village does issue debt, that will be rated. So we go through a rating update process with Standard and Poor's. They also do annual monitoring. So if you're in a year where you don't issue debt, they likely are still analyzing the village and determining what your creditworthiness is. So nothing really changed this year, which is good. So double A, really strong credit rating, stable outlook. Just a few high-level notes here. The general fund historically has been stable with predictable revenue. Reserves are high compared with expenditures. And then this item two, management is very strong with good financial policies, comprehensive budget construction and monitoring, and long-term financial and capital planning. So they do highlight the financial management plan process that you do go through on an annual basis is one of the reasons for assigning that double A credit rating. The debt profile for the village is weak due to high carrying charges, which management proactively manages, and well-funded pensions. This is something we kind of see for all municipalities in Wisconsin just given the, the rules that municipalities work under. There is just a higher debt burden for municipalities in Wisconsin as compared to maybe other states. Moving on to the general fund balance. So this first slide is really looking at where you have been. So the most important number here is the bottom. This is your percentage of fund balance to your expenses. So SMP wants to see that around 25 to 30%. You have exceeded that. In 2017, you were 34%, kind of hanging right around that, going up and down a little bit every year. But 2023, 35%, staying pretty stable right around that 35%. The internal policy for the village is 20 to 30%, so you have consistently exceeded that policy. If you were to dip lower than 30%, that could have some negative rating impacts. The way that they write these credit opinions now are they're being more objective as to if this happens, you can expect a decrease. If this happens, you can expect an increase. And one of the things they do highlight in that is if you have a lower fund balance percentage, that could negatively impact your credit rating. So an important thing to keep an eye on. Moving on to this next slide, this is something Cameron wanted added where if you maintain the current fund balance where it's at, you don't add to it, but your expenses continue to go up. What does that mean just on a percentage basis? So you can see in '24, there's a decrease where you'd be around 29% and continuing to decrease year-over-year by 2029, still around 24%. So within your policy of 20 to 30%, but about 10% lower than where you ended 2023. So just kind of driving home to the point that it's important to continue to add to fund balance as your expenses do increase. Moving forward to levy limits. So I'm sure everybody hears this thrown around all the time, but what are levy limits? The village is able to grow the operating levy by a rate of net new construction as a percentage of the overall value of the village or zero, whatever is greater. So if you have a year where you don't have any net new construction, you wouldn't be able to grow your operating levy at all. Now, that doesn't mean your levy can't grow at all. So there are certain things that are excluded from levy limits, namely debt service. So we'll get to that a little bit later on, but the primary adjustment that the village does take on an annual basis is an adjustment for debt service. Moving forward, what has levy limits meant for the past several budget cycles? In 2019, you had 3.14% net new construction, which translated around 70,000 of levy growth. Saw kind of the same story in 2020 and 2021. And then the past couple of years, you've seen really strong net new construction. Looking at '22, right shy of 6%, which translated 141,000 of levy capacity. Similar story in 2023, 180,000 of levy capacity. And then 2024, a slight dip, but still looking at being able to grow your levy by 110,000 for 2024, into the 2025. Moving on to the value projection for the village. So this is important for two reasons. One, it helps us project where the tax rate could end up. And two, it projects how much of your GO debt limit you'll be utilizing. So just as a reminder, you're only able to issue up to 5% of your total equalized value. That's a cap that the state sets for you for having GO debt principal outstanding. So we have schedules in here that can show you where you'll be at on that test for all these different scenarios that we'll talk about. But the story here is the village has seen really strong growth over the past several years and there's an expectation that that growth will continue for the foreseeable future. How we have this model is around 5% annual growth. And this does account for, at the bottom here, we're looking at TID out. So this is the amount of value that's supported, supporting the levy. We do have an adjustment, a pretty sizable adjustment hitting the 2027 budget from the closure of TID number five. So that's assuming that there wouldn't be an affordable housing extension and that that district would be closed out when it does recover its cost. So moving on to the general fund. So we're going to talk about the operating side of things here real quick and then we'll dive into more of that 10-year debt outlook. But looking at just the general fund operating, some of the assumptions that we built into our model. Shared revenue will now grow on an annual basis as a part of Act 12. We've been told by the state to estimate around 2% for this next budget. And then from there, it's tied to the growth in state sales tax. So it's kind of hard to predict exactly where that's going to shake out. So just to be conservative, we kept that at a 2% growth going forward. Transportation aids, we projected those to increase at four and a half percent annually. The special charge for refuse, we've assumed that increases at 2% annually. And then most other non-levy revenue sources were kept flat within the model to try to make this a little more conservative. Going on to how we grow some of the expense side of things. What we do is we take all your five-year history and we go line item by line item analysis and we classify each expense into a certain bucket. And then we inflate it based on kind of what's happened within those specific costs or what we expect to happen to those costs. So those buckets are outlined here where you have commodities, which would be like fuel or any type of office supplies, things of that nature. We inflated that at 2%. Employee insurance, we inflated at 5%. Insurance for property and liability was inflated at 4%. Any services were inflated at 2% and then wages were inflated at 3.2%. So what does that mean to the overall general fund when you look at the total revenues and the total expenses on Slide 11? The revenues are shown here at the top. So that first line item, that is your property taxes that are coming in to support the general fund. So that's your largest line item of revenues with your other sizable ones being other taxes. Inter-governmental revenues are pretty sizable as well. And then a variety of other sources come in into the general fund. And then the expenses here at the bottom, we broke into general administration. And then public safety is broken up in a couple of different buckets just so you can kind of see where police is going as compared to fire and EMS and then other as well. So on, on the whole, we're showing from '24 to '25. In '24, there's around 6.9 million of revenues and expenses within the general fund. 2025, the model is showing around 7.4 million of revenues and 7.4 million of expenses within the general fund. So that levy increased around 540,000 for operations. And now we're going to switch gears a little bit. And after kind of going through the, the operating side of things, we'll now look at debt. And so these are your larger capital-type projects. This Slide 12 is just giving you a high-level overview of what the three scenarios are that we built out. We'll introduce the fourth one from Budget Committee later on. But this one on the left, this was your bare-bones scenario. I guess before I get into that, all three of these scenarios have the same general assumption of $11.5 million for vehicles and equipment and another $11.5 million for road and trail maintenance for the 10-year window. So that's 23 million of kind of base projects that are baked in to each of these three models. And then we add in additional projects on top of that for each of those scenarios. So the bare-bones scenario has an additional 25 million in projects from '25 to '28. The middle has right around 30 million of major projects from '25 to '31. And then the all-in has 43 million of projects from '25 to '34. Diving into what those projects are here a little bit on Slide 13. Major capital projects for the bare-bones scenario are shown here. So again, these are those that are above that $23 million base. There's an intersection improvement here to County Highway North, bike path extension, the police station being funded, a ladder truck. And then you have some unspent debt proceeds from the debt issued earlier this year. Those were issued as geo promissory notes, which is new. So it used to be under the old law, geo promissory notes were limited to a repayment term of 10 years. That was extended to 20 years. What that means for the village is you used to issue bonds for 20-year debt. If you issue bonds, you issue them by purpose and you have to spend them by purpose. Geo notes, it's different. You issue a note for pretty much any purpose. And if you have to reallocate proceeds, you can reallocate proceeds. So you have flexibility as to how these proceeds are spent, which means if you have leftover proceeds from the '24 borrowings, you can put those towards really any project for this next budget cycle, which is very good for the village, very good for municipalities in Wisconsin. Great law change. Looking at the middle option, we're kind of just building down. So from the less 2024 unspent debt proceeds, anything added under that, those are the ones added within the middle scenario. So adding some park improvements, pond improvements, some more intersection improvements as well. I'm not going to go through these in great detail, but all the information is provided here and we can have a greater discussion on this later on. The major capitals, all-in, this is adding in additional projects further down. So more street work, more bike paths, things of that nature. So now looking at how this debt would be repaid. What we want to start with is your base case. So what the base case is, is where you are today before you fund any new projects. Looking on the left of this schedule, I know there's a lot of numbers here, so I'll just kind of walk through it real quick. On the left is your total GO debt service payment for the life of any of the debt that you have outstanding right now. So let's focus it on 2024. There's $3.5 million of debt service in 2024. There is some debt expense tied to that to around 3,000, but not all of that is supported by the levy. So you're issuing, yeah.
Is that all debt? Is that just the general obligation notes or is it including bonds?
It's all.
All debt, okay.
It's all general obligation debt. Yep. So anything that you're pledging the property tax towards. Yep. But not all of that debt is paid by the levy despite pledging the levy to pay for it. You do use other sources to pay for that debt service. You've borrowed for TID projects. You've borrowed for utility projects. And so the expectation there is that those revenues from those different projects will be used to pay for their obligated debt service. So TID number five paid for 1.3 million of debt service this year. TID number six, 50,000. TID seven, 358,000. You have TID nine debt starting next year. Sewer debt and water debt, a portion of your GO debt did go towards those more revenue-type funds, your utility funds, because GO debt does price better than revenue debt. So you could have gone out and borrowed sewer revenue debt and water revenue debt. But the thinking here was if you can get a better cost of borrowing by leveraging that GO debt limit, maybe you can decrease some of the rate impacts to your rate payers by putting this debt onto the GO. So that's kind of the idea here why you see sewer and water abatements. You have some premiums. So when you do issue debt, sometimes underwriters will pay you extra money upfront to purchase that debt with the idea that they're going to get a higher interest rate on the back end. So they're kind of prepaying you for the ability to have the higher interest rate. The state does restrict how you use that, so you have to use it to pay debt service. So that's why it's used here to abate some of that levy need. And then you do have interest earnings on some of those retained proceeds or money within the debt service fund. So taking a step back, you had 3.5 million of debt service in 2024. Only 1.3 million of that was directly supported by the levy. That translates to a dollar and 73 tax rate on an equalized basis. So we used equalized throughout this model. I'll pause real quick and explain what that means. So there's two values that exist out there. There's assessed value and equalized value. Equalized value will change every year because that's really the market value that's adjusted by the state on an annual basis. Assessed value only changes when you go through a reassessment of the entire village. So you'll see huge jumps when you go through a revale that you don't see with equalized. So what we tried to do here is go with that equalized value since that changes kind of annually. It gives you a better look at the overall impact when you're looking out five, 10 years because it's hard to really predict the impact of a revaluation, but you might have one or two of those in the five or 10-year window where the equalize, it's going to change every year. So this gives you that longer-term outlook. But for $100,000 of value, there is about $173 going towards debt service on the tax bill.
Harry, do you want to also just briefly cover TID in and TID out?
Yeah. Great question. So TID out, that's the value of the village that's going to support the levy. TID in is the overall value of the village that you're adding in, the, the TID or the value within your tax increment districts. And that doesn't directly impact the tax rate of the village. But what it does do within the model is impact how much GO debt you can incur. Perfect. So now switching again and looking at the impact of this new debt. We're going to have all three of those scenarios that we walked through, starting with the bare bones. So the bare bones, looking at, let's just skip to 2028 when most of this debt is online. Or sorry, 2029, you'd have about 4.1 million going towards debt service annually that's supported by the levy. So at 1.3 million in the '24 budget, stepping up to that 4.1 million by 2029, this does account for that large capital project for the police station. So that would be hitting in 2027. That's why you see a bigger jump in that year. And then the later years, looking around 200,000 as your annual increase in the debt service levy. I'll run through these schedules pretty quick. I do have a summary slide in here. So that, that'll give you more of the information that's more digestible. But looking at the impact to your GO debt limit, under the bare bones, by the time all the debt is issued, the highest you would get is 57% of your utilization of the GO debt limit. That's a pretty comfortable place to be. We see many communities that exceed that, that are 70, 75%. 57%, that's probably in the sweet spot, like. That's probably in the sweet spot, like anything around 60%. If you start hitting like 65, maybe you're starting to get a little uncomfortable there where you're limiting your ability into the future. But having 57% as the max shown in the schedule, that, that's a pretty comfortable level. And then moving on to the middle scenario. This has a levy going up a little bit higher, so just keeping that focus on 2029. About a $4.4 million debt service levy in 2029. And those increases in the later years are around 225,000. So about 25,000 more per year. The utilization of the geo debt limit in the middle option would be a little bit higher since you're taking on more projects. So right around 59% under this scenario. And then looking at the all in, keeping that focus on 2029, that would be about 4.75 million as your debt service levy. And then around 345,000 as those annual increases in the late years. And then your utilization of the geo debt limit in the all in model would be around 61%. So now let's, I guess we have the total levy impact here. And then we'll dive into kind of the, the summary of the differences between the three. So what this schedule right now is showing you is where you have been for the past five years on the overall levy. So now we're taking that operations information that we went through earlier on, adding in the debt service and projecting out where your overall levy would be that you're assigning to your taxpayers. What we've done in the middle is shown the taxes based on assessed value and equalized value. I'm going to keep the focus tonight on that equalized value line. So in 2024, for a hundred thousand dollars of equalized value within the village, there's around 578 of total village taxes. We're showing for 2025, under the bare bones model, that that would increase by about $20 per 100,000 of home value. And then around 60 in 26. And then you actually see a decrease for the 27 budget. The reason for that decrease is largely from the closure of TID five. And that additional value coming onto the TID out value now instead of your TID in. So it is being supported by the levy at that point. The other thing I'll point out here is 27 is the first year that we do show a levy limit gap. So that's the first budget where the village would not be able to make your levy what it needs to be to support all the services that you do provide. So there, there's a gap there that you're not allowed to recover under levy limits. So there are different solutions there. You pulled one of the triggers last year by moving the refuse off the levy into a fee. So I believe this is the same that was shown in last year's update. But just aware that, that 2027 budget, there is a, a gap there of what can be supported under levy limits.
Yeah, Harry, or Harry, if I could stop you there real quick. For those who were presented this model last year, that, that number was much more significant. We were, one of the years, we were showing close to a million dollar of operating deficit. We, you know, we continue to work on minimizing this projected deficit here in the future. And, and so like Harry had mentioned, we did convert a levy supported service to a charge for service. But we, we are getting towards the end of the road on, on different options that we can do. The good news is, and we'll summarize this a little bit later. All of these are, the, the model with the budget review committee example will show that the tax rate increase over the course of the five year plan is actually consistent with the tax increase over the last five years. So once, once we're done with the presentation, I have a good graphic to show to, to the board to kind of better illustrate the, the tax impact and how this was all strategically planned with the TID closure, TID five closure.
Thanks, Cameron.
So moving on to slide 24, we're going to take a look at the middle option. So this is taking on a few more projects. You'll see a slightly higher tax impact, given that this is all debt that you're taking on and that is exempt from levy limits. The levy limit gap that you see in 27 to 29 will actually be identical in all three of these scenarios, since that's looking at your operating levy, not your exempt debt service levy. But here you see for 25, kind of that same about $20 impact to the 25 budget. And then looking into 26, another $65 step up. And then again, a decrease in 27 and kind of leveling out for those last two years. And then the all in scenario, again, you'll see a slightly higher tax impact here. 2026, you're looking more around $67 increase. Still a decrease into 2027, albeit a little bit smaller. And then leveling out, actually stepping up a little bit in 28 and 29. On slide 26, this is breaking down that levy limit just a little bit more so you can kind of understand the math. I'm not going to walk through all the numbers on the spreadsheet in great detail. But just to give you an idea of how your levy limit does get calculated on an annual basis, it's really based on that net new construction. So looking at the 24 to 25, you're able to grow that operating levy by 4.4%, we'll call it. So around 110,000 of capacity there, which gives you a levy limit before your adjustments. It's 2.66 million. And then your adjustment that you take annually is for debt service. So that debt service adjustment is 3.7 million estimated for 25, which gives you that allowable levy of 6.4 million. And then looking towards the future, what you can do with that debt service adjustment is you can claim your total geo debt service payment for the following year. We went over it already, that you don't pay all of that debt service from the levy, but you still have the ability to levy for it. The state doesn't say if you're paying this from TID, you lose the levy authority. Your levy authority is based on the pledge. So you're pledging geo debt, you, you can levy for it. And so what we show going into the future is a higher utilization of that geo debt limit until you're actually using your entire, or your entire adjustment for geo debt to max, pretty much take the maximum levy that you're allowed under levy limits. And even in that scenario, you fall short of being able to make the levy what it needs to be to cover the cost of the village.
Yeah, here, I'm going to just stop you one more time there too. I think it's important to note, in, in all the scenarios that were presented, even the year of that shortfall, that we have a deficit, all of those examples showed an actual tax decrease. And this is just kind of something, you know, funky with the levy limit law. Because so much of that TID value is coming onto the, the tax base. Our operations didn't change, but unfortunately, we're just not allowed to increase our levy to, you know, keep up with kind of that annual increase to cover the cost of, of services. And again, not, has nothing to do with, you know, being fiscally responsible. It's just the situation that we're put in under the current levy limit laws.
So moving on to the next slide where it's just giving you a summary level information of those three different scenarios. So it started with the bare bones. An average levy change per year over five years of around 12%. Looking at the middle, that would be around 13%. And then the all in is still right around 13%. The tax rate on an equalized basis would be $6.24 under the bare bones, stepping up to 6.33 under the middle and 6.42 with the all in. So stepping around nine cents on the tax rate for each scenario. The max geo debt capacity utilization under bare bones is 57%, 59 for middle and 61 for the all in. And then all show that same levy limit gap in 2027, given that that's on your operating side. Now we'll introduce a final scenario. So this is what was proposed by budget committee. So we added in the, basically it's a middle between the middle and the bare bones. So doing the minimum that you need to do plus some really needed projects, which are added here on the bottom. I believe starting with Shady Grove Park and down are the additional ones added by budget committee.
Yeah, and I'll add a little bit of context to there. So Shady Grove at the 675,000, we know there's not that many, that much park development fees that have been collected for that park. However, the budget review committee kind of decided that maybe let's do phase one of Shady Grove Park and, and see how much money we have on hand to be able to do at least the first iteration or a, a much stepped down version of what was planned. So that's why in the model, you're going to see $675,000 cost, but then $675,000 of funds used. That, that's really just to demonstrate that, that, that project should only be, at least right now, covered utilizing what's available for fees that have been collected for Shady Grove. Two other projects, Ollie Street and the, the path connection to McCarthy Park. Really the reason why those two projects were added back, they both relate. Ollie Street relates to a sewer, a sewer project. So while that 525,000 represents the cost of doing the street, it, the, the sewer improvement needs to be done regardless. So, so what was presented to the budget review committee was that we should, we should, we should also replace the road after, you know, doing the work. And, and similar with the, the path for McCarthy Park. That really is kind of our best bang for our buck on being able to, to put amenity to the community for a fairly reasonable cost, because we have to do some groundwork anyways. And Kyla and JJ could speak more to those projects should questions come up. And then Sarah and Heidi had, had requested, you know, BV bus, the bike path, intersection improvement and Vilas Road connection to Bakken Park, just, just for additional pad improvements. Back to you, Harry.
Thanks. So now looking at those same schedules we went through earlier, but for the budget committee model, looking at that debt service levy in 2029, that would be around 4.3 million. So around 200,000 annual increases to the levy once that police station comes on. And then the utilization of that geo debt limit would, would top out at 58% in 2026. So now just looking at the overall levy and tax rate, around $660 of taxes per 100,000 of home value in 2026. And then holding pretty level around 630 for 27 through 29. So how does this compare to the bare bones and the middle model? The budget committee is kind of right in the middle. So the average levy change per year over the five years is 12%. So right at that bare bones level. The average equalized tax rate over five years is $6.28. It's almost smack dab between the 6.33 of the middle and the 6.24 of the bare bones. The max geo debt capacity is 58%. So again, right in the middle of middle and bare bones. And then levy limit gap still hidden in 2027. Then this last item here is just to give you a high level overview of where the five open tax increment districts are for the village. So TID number five, this has around 230 million of incremental value. It's paying off incentives and debt with a projected closure in 2026 impacting the 2027 budget. TID number six, this has around 3 million of incremental value. It partially supports debt. There's a mismatch between the revenues being generated and the debt service being paid. So the intent here is to ask for a six year extension from the joint review board so that this district does have more time to recover. TID number eight has around one and a half million of incremental value with some existing PEGO agreements in place. So PEGO stands for pay as you go. The idea here is that a developer has to perform and create value before they would get any type of reimbursement on that value. So they have to pay their taxes and they get a portion of that back. TID number nine has around 50 million of incremental value. This does support debt service for land acquisition. And then TID number 10, it says 3.7 million of incremental value, a substantial amount more planned within this district with future PEGO incentives in place. And that is everything I had for the FMP update. So at this point, I think we're going to open up for discussion and questions.
Yeah, let's, let's put a, I'm going to talk a little bit more because I'm sure everybody's favorite person to listen to or to hear from. So one of the things that the, the budget review committee found helpful, and I will take some time to share here, is there's a lot of information in front of you, but what does, what does that kind of look like on the average home here in Cottage Grove? So first, first and foremost, historically, taking what the last five years and what the, the average tax impact has been.
Hey, Cameron, can you make it bigger? We have old eyes in the room.
How's that?
Yep, that's better, Cameron. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. So historically, looking kind of over the last five years, you know, just wanted to kind of put a lot of this into perspective when we're talking about the, the next five year plan. You know, obviously increased cost of service and cost of goods is expected year over year. So in the la, over the last five years, the village has, you know, seen roughly about a hundred dollar, 187 dollar per year average increase year over year on the average home. So one of the things when, when Harry was, was talking about the plan, why it's kind of important to use equalized values is it, is it kind of puts things into comparability year over year. However, sometimes it does kind of create some confusion, because you're not actually taxed based off of equalized value. So we kind of try to, to put it back into, in, in terms for, you know, our average residents to, to understand and how, how, how does it affect them? So each, each of this, this model going forward will show, starting with the bare bone situation, is a revaluation in 2026. So the bare bone situation or simulation had, would actually result in an average per year increase of $58.45, which is actually pretty impressive in my opinion, when you're talking about adding a legacy project like the police station. You know, and that, there was some intentionality with, done with that project. So the MSB debt service was, was paid off this year. We had our final debt payment for the debt that was taken out for that space. That kind of mirrored the needs for that facility, understanding now that that facility is kind of being outgrown. We can kind of, you know, when, when we were discussing the police station and the impact on debt service and operations, you know, we were initially estimating anywhere between 300 and 350 dollars on the average tax home. This kind of shows kind of the negatives that are coming off the tax rule. The debt with MSB as well as the, the positive impact that TID five has coming back onto the tax rule. So the bare bone situation would actually show a kind of a, a healthy increase in the first couple of years of the plan, but then actual decreases in the, in the tax rate, starting in 27, 28 and 29. The middle as presented would show about $121 average impact per year. And the all in being $142.09 impact per year, or $710.45. So the, as I kind of mentioned before, the budget review committee being $115.03 is, is very, very close to where we've been historically, but still seeing decrease, a decrease in 2027. This is only modeling the village's portion of the tax rule. So it's very likely that other taxing jurisdictions will see modest to significant tax decreases when TID five comes back on the tax rule. But those numbers are, are so difficult at this point in time to estimate. We, we just don't feel like it would be a good, it would be a good idea to present those tonight on, on what those hypotheticals could be, because we don't control the other taxing jurisdictions. And again, this is kind of where we have been historically. So at this time. So at this time, um, kind of what we did with the Budget Review Committee, this is a, this is a discuss and consider item. Um, this, this is again, kind of the, the last step in the planning process of the budget. This document really now gets used as the kind of baseline for a budget that will be presented to the Budget Review Committee. Um, so I'm gonna kind of kick it back to the board here, um, and, you know, discuss. I, I would recommend, starting with the Budget Review Committee, um, recommendation and adding and subtracting projects, that, that you feel that the board would like to modify. Um, but yeah, we'll, I'll kick it back to you guys.
Thanks, Cameron. Thanks, Harry. Um, with that, then we'll open up for the board for questions or comments.
Before we get to the specific projects and things, could we go back to slides four and five with the general fund balance? And it's looking like we're gonna start to go below 30 and you talked about tonight, and then we talked about, um, also on Budget Review Committee, so it's not my first time looking at this, which is helpful, um, that we kind of go below the 30%. I mean, that's probably due to our expenses are getting higher and the funds staying the same, so then our percentage goes lower. But how, how do we plan to manage to keep that kind of above the 30%?
So this is, this is the balance between being conservative and hyper-conservative. Um, so I put this in front, that, this is, this is exactly why we don't try to guess our expenditures to the penny. We need to have a little bit of a buffer because if we don't naturally, every year the village, or most years, the village buzzes budgets for a zero dollar, you know, or a balanced budget, no, zero net income. So this slide from 20, um, 2024 to 2029 really just shows what would happen if, you know, our expenditures increased, but we don't actually add anything to our reserves. Um, so one of the things that I, I am very conservative is I, I don't ever recommend, um, you know, being aggressive, for like, let's say, interest income. I'll always be very conservative on there, and i- if we end up better than that, great. That's all, that, that's all things that could be wrapped into our, our, our fund balance. Um, naturally, we budget for all of our positions. So if there is vacancies, um, while I don't like saving money that way, um, sometimes vacancies create natural kind of budget savings. Um, so that is also ways that, you know, we can, you know, save up and, and vacancies are part of, of any organization. There, there's, there are actually discussions whether or not, you know, you should plan budgeting vacancies. Um, but I, I think a, a conservative approach would be, you know, to continue to budget as if somebody, everybody's gonna be there the whole year. Hopefully, that, that's helpful. Um.
Yeah, and we continue to monitor it over time and would adjust our budget if we find that we're not meeting it, like, um, you know, snow removal service, if we're not budgeting enough for that. Uh, that's kind of an unpredictable thing that some years it may go over and some under, I would imagine.
Yeah, um, and, and I think it's, it's important to know, um, you know, the, the way the current fund balance he is writ- fund balance policy is written, um, actually compares our reserve to current year expenditures. Um, it should actually be referring to future year expenditures because when we're looking at our fund balance, it's, it's always, it's gonna, so our 2020 year-end, 2023 fund balance, we're already in budget year 2024. Um, so that's actually gonna make that percentage looks a little bit less. Uh, but we still are right about that, that 30%. Um, excuse me. Um, but we would proactively, through those quarterly reports, if, if I felt like we were gonna end the year, in a non-positive light, I would recommend potentially some cost-cutting, uh, areas, um, by the end of the year. Um, because ultimately, that wouldn't be an appropriate thing for, for staff to do. The, the, the board would wanna be active in, in any cost cuttings needed to event any, any material changes in fund balance.
Thanks, Cameron. Appreciate it.
You know, when you look at the trend though, from 24 to 29, you know, the trend is really concerning, right? And so, holding it flat would be ideal. Um, getting back to the 35% would be fantastic, but trending down to 24 is really a concerning trend. So I guess, what's driving that and, and what are your recommendations in terms of trying to stem the, the decline?
Yeah, and, and I guess there, this would be if nothing changed. So I guess my recommendation to the board, um, to, is always fund balance, proactively manage this. So we should make sure that our budget figures are realistic. And, and so if we, I mean, if we, if we cut, you know, a budget line just to make the tax impact a certain amount for one year, um, even though we know we're not gonna hit that, that would cause negative budget performance. Um, you know, I think, I think we have mechanisms in place, specifically, um, as I mentioned, you know, we have about 120,000 budgeted in the general fund for net, for interest income. We're probably gonna be about 250 or 275,000 at the end of this year. Again, those are great investment reserves, but I, those are the kind of things you're not gonna ever wanna be overly aggressive on what you're gonna actually get as a result. So that's okay if that hits fund balance and, and kind of allowing that fund balance to organically grow. Um, you know, so if you see kind of a, at, you know, budgeting zero dollars each year, but we actually gain 30 or 60,000 of net income, that's actually a positive thing. Um, and it, it's always gonna be a hotly debated topic. Um, but I, this, this graphic is definitely not to show this is what our goal is. This is what, just to make the board aware that this does need to be actively managed each year.
Cameron, is it safe to say this is the worst-case scenario? Kind of, I mean, maybe there's a wor- even worse case, but this is if every year for these years, our budget ends at zero and we have nothing to carry over, essentially. And each year in the past, we have had money that carries over because we have unfilled positions or other things don't cost us as much. So this is if every year, the budget, we spent every dollar we said we were going to spend. This is what it would look like. But historically, that has not been the case.
Yeah, and, and there, there have been years that the, the village has had deficits. Um, there's been reasons, um, for that. Um, but yes, m- more often than not, the village ends up with a surplus and, and, and very, and proactively manages the, the fund balance. Um, and, and these are really good discussions that are being had, um, about this currently.
And Cam- Cameron, sorry, just to add, um, in those years where, um, the, the board has approved one-time uses, uh, strategically, sometimes where it's gotten maybe higher, you know, like in 20, you know, in 2019, for example, and you're approaching 40%. Sometimes, sometimes the elected body would prefer, um, because it can go the other way where you might have, you might have residents saying, you guys are quote-unquote hoarding taxpayer money. You've already taxed us for this. You're holding on to it. How do you plan to utilize it? So sometimes, for a one-time capital purchase, you just wouldn't want to dedicate it to, uh, any kind of reoccurring expense. But yeah, sometimes there's a, um, a, a budgeted use of reserves.
Yeah, exactly. And I think, you know, to your, to your point, Matt, we, we could probab- the, the third quarter, um, report's gonna come out to the board relatively soon. Um, I, I think what you'll see is a very positive, again, 2024. Um, back in 2022, um, there was also projected, you know, we were doing better than expected from reserve perspective, and, and Matt and I had, had a couple of conversations, well, is this, is this time to start maybe thinking about spending on one-time reserves? Um, at that point in time, just with where inflation was, and I'm, I'm certainly happy we didn't. Um, I just didn't feel comfortable making that, any type of one-time transfers, uh, or, or, or budgeted use of fund balance. Um, so kind of when, when we're going into the, the 25 budget cycle, um, it, it's, as you can see on this chart, it's not something I would definitely recommend. Um, if, if, if we weren't adding to our, our fund balance each year, it's not something I would recommend doing, spending down.
Yeah, you know, as I look at it, the, the drop in percentage, the absolute value is holding around 2.2 million, but the, the, but the percentage um, is dropping because of the rising expenditures, right? And the, the, the big jump is 12.9% in next year's budget. So how realistic is that? Is that, are there opportunities there? I mean, those are really the things we need to be looking at, right?
Yeah, I, I could, I, I think it's important during budget presentations, um, that I can give you an estimate of what I think that's gonna be. I think we'll actually be closer to 32 or 33% at the end of 2024. Um, Matt and I have even talked about to an extent, just, just with how significant the interest, um, earnings have been over this past year to potentially even, um, start considering maybe even a transfer into the Capital Project Fund to support like a one-time expenditure, like a, a strategic plan or, um, comprehensive plan. Um, at this time, I don't have those exact figures. I think once we get through the third quarter, I can, I, I'll be able to provide a pretty precise estimate on where I think we're gonna land.
Other questions, comments?
Um, on page seven, so is there a projected growth, uh, for the levy limits for 2025?
Yeah, so what's showing here is the construction, this is based on assessment year. So 2024, that's 24 assessment year for the 25 budget. So that growth of 110,000, that's for the 25 budget.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm, I'm on the Budget Review Committee, so I'd have had a chance to look at this, so thank you for quickly getting together the Budget Review Committee's recommendation. I know there was a holiday weekend in there, so thank you for putting that forward, and I'll be curious to hear what the board thinks of the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Yeah, I had a question. So I, I understand adding some of these, obviously, access to Bakken Park. I mean, that's really a major gap in terms of a safe way to get down to an area where we've invested a lot of dollars in a really, really nice park. So I certainly believe in that. I'm not quite sure I'm aligned with what the thought processes and prioritizing the McCarthy Park connection. If you could maybe share your thoughts or the Budget Committee's thoughts on that?
I can take that one, I think. Um, that's a water utility project primarily. The significant cost on that one is gonna be adding a redundant water main underneath the interstate. Right now, we have, well, it's not a balloon on a string, it's just a string. But once development comes north, um, there's only one water main feeding. We need, there's a plan 15, whenever they rip up the interstate, there's a casing pipe underneath. We need to bring a water main around to have a redundant feed. Perfect time, as you're doing that, to throw an asphalt path over it to access the hydrants and valves you'll have and provide that connection, so. Water utilities gotta do it anyway. That would be the best time to add that path.
So when you say they gotta do it anyway, is that driven by the future growth and we're, we're kind of planning ahead? Or is that something that we should do when the time comes? I guess that's my question.
That's why, well, for me, and I would, I won't speak for Kyla, she's only had a short time, but once there's actual businesses out on that end, um, fed by one water main, inside right-of-way that's controlled by the DOT, that's a nightmare scenario that there's ever a leak there and you have no other choice but to shut water off up there. Um, water systems don't like those strings, and it's been okay for however long it's been laying there, but once there's actual businesses out there relying on that water service, I really wanna have that, that water main redundancy, so.
It's, it's all about loops, for, loops for sewer and water.
Yeah, no, it's a small, it's not a significant amount of money, and certainly based on what you're saying, JJ, I mean, I, I understand. Thank you.
And it's kind of similar with Ollie Street too. We have to redo the sewer there, so we might as well redo that road. It's actually terrible in its shape right now.
Yeah, that one's actually sewer and water, so basically we'll have, at the very least, 20 feet of asphalt torn out, so you might as well do the complete reconstruction there.
Gotcha. So the other question I had is the BB, um, the, to bus bike path and intersection improvement, so, so that helps us get down to Granite Ridge, right? So is there, is that including like a sidewalk or a path up to Granite Ridge School, or is it just taking us down to that intersection?
This one gets a little more complicated based on the potential development there that would be required to put in the vast majority of it. Hopefully, if things stay on track, the village piece of this would just be whatever improvements would be made to basically cross from Shady Grove over to the path that will then run to the schools and along the north side there, all the way back into the village.
I sat in the meeting and watched it last week, but you took North Lawn Park Retention Pond out of the, because there is other funding for that project, correct?
So as of right now, we have a stormwater grant. Josh, tell me if I'm speaking wrong on this. We have a grant that was approved, um, last year that we received funding for half per the DNR. So we have that funding already available for Strand to do a study of our entire stormwater infrastructure, looking at best practices, future maintenance, all sorts of things. They are planning to do that project in 2025, and out of that report, they will have a best practice of essentially the best bang for our buck for, um, Yoharwin's TSS, TMDL reduction. Um, at this time, there's some funding mechanisms that we can get from the DNR and Dane County up to like a million dollars, give or take, but we wouldn't apply for that until 2026, where construction would be in 2027.
Kyla, I'm, I'm proud of myself because I know those acronyms, but, uh, maybe, uh, just spell those out.
Yep, TSS is total suspended solids and TMDL is... That one. Are there any other questions on that?
Yeah, so are you saying that we're pretty confident there's gonna be no impact to the village for that work? Or were we expecting, once all the cards fall, that we're, there may be a, a budget item that's gonna come down the road?
Yes. Yep.
There will be cost share, but the lion's share you could potentially get funding for. Yeah, so we're just positioning ourselves right for that with the village. And then Heidi, to answer your question, North Lawn may not be the one, may not be the best choice. We're thinking it may be, but we're gonna study it overall and then, then find that best choice, uh, where to apply those dollars. Best bang for your buck.
Um, just one, one important thing to note, um, the grant that Strand is doing is gonna require 100, I think it's 160,000 dollar, um, investment. Um, so we'll get half of it covered by grant and half of it needs to be funded by the village, which will be presented in the 2025 budget. Um, so that will be coming your way here in the next couple of months, next month.
Thanks, Cameron. Other questions regards to the financial management plan?
Can we have a discussion, um, considering the community park improvements? It was in the middle category, but didn't make it into the Budget Review Recommendation.
And we talked about that at committee also, that maybe we go back to the drawing board and see what the bare minimum would be to get accessibility access, like it, to get, like, firm up the numbers and then add that in in the future. Like, how could we get like that basic accessible access and then kind of go from there and add it back in? If there's anything else, committee members remember, Sean has to add on?
No, yeah, it's something Parks is gonna work on.
And then on a, a similar note, the, um, the town's discussing the connection between the town and village streets, um, tonight. And I was wondering if that is a favorable outcome. It could be considered putting that into the, um, moving that up in the budget as well.
I think that's a fairly low cost, isn't it?
I think it's the lowest out of all of them.
Yeah. Yeah, we do need the right-of-way, and if we don't get the right-of-way, then we might as well not talk about it and put it in the plan because it won't happen. So Chairman Hampton did say that they will be talking about it, as you said, tonight, and we'll see where that goes. So could that be added in with a future amendment to the FMP then, or? Yeah, I think, you know, the board can do anything, but yes, I think that would be.
And I, I think the other thing that's helpful for me is this is a plan. It's not approving these projects. All these projects will come to the board for actual approval. So that also is just a helpful reminder for me that that's what this financial management plan is.
Right, because when you look at the bare bones, you've got five. Right, cuz when you look at the bare bones, you've got five projects. When you look at the middle, it was plus nine. When you looked at the all-in, it was plus 19 more. So, it's, yeah, helpful to know, that doesn't mean that's never gonna happen, but wiggling that in. And then I just did have one question. So, when we hit the 58%, or 58 to 61%, 57 to 61% or whatever it was, debt capacity, there's still quite a bit of wiggle room if new projects we do wanna add in at some point.
Yeah.
Correct?
Let me just give the dollar amount, I think that's included.
That would actually be helpful, cuz if you go from bare bones, you're at 57%. You go up to all-in, you're adding in 14 million, but you're only going up to 61% debt capacity. So, there is, you said 65 is still comfortable?
Yeah, probably don't wanna go too much higher than 65. Uh, but at 57%, you'd have around 40 million of residual capacity. And then if you step up to that 61%, you'd still be around 35 million of residual capacity.
Yeah, and, and Harry, to your point, I think it's important to know, we're not targeting not any percentage per se. Um, so I, I, I think it wouldn't be good to say maybe 65% is bad, 75% is bad. It, it's all about a plan. So, if we go to SMP and we say, hey, there's a reason why we're at 73%, and it's because of X investment, and we can demonstrate that year-over-year on why we're going there, and it's not gonna be a permanent thing, but we're gonna be there and then edge our way down. I think that's, that's kinda what's important. Um, one of the things that we're doing right now is we're working on finalizing the sewer study, and, and as Harry had mentioned before, um, sometimes we can get better interest rates by not taking out revenue debt, um, and, and taking out geo-debt instead. Um, and, and I get, call it taxes, call it sewer fees, um, our goal is to make sure that the rates for village residents are as low as possible. Um, so, we may come back and incorporate an amendment to this plan or recommend an amendment to this plan that actually shows the recommended borrowing, um, on the sewer side for some, a couple of projects, just so you can see what that, that impact is on the capacity.
Yeah, it just concerns me when we say, oh, we're good with 65 or 70. I mean, let's face it, debt is bad because the interest does nothing for the village. So, you know, I get a little, little uneasy when you say, yeah, 65 is, is comfortable. I mean, I totally understand the financial elements of making it comfortable. Certainly doesn't make me comfortable, and it shouldn't make anybody in this room comfortable, that we're pushing the debt limit, or we're pushing our debt levels to, to that kind of high of a percentage. So, I mean, that's just my comment, and I, I guess I'll just leave it at that.
I think my point was more that there is capacity to add projects in if that, if there's a need for those projects.
If there is a need.
Yes.
Any other questions? So, we got Harry here and Cameron.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the financial management plan as presented with the Budget Committee.
Can I get clarification? Are you talking about the fourth, fourth version, or?
Yes, the Budget Committee, um, option that was presented at the end of the presentation.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion second. Is there any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Harry. All right, then we move to Public Works and Properties. Chris?
Actually, yep, we just turned this back on here to, to bring the Bike and Ped Plan back to the board. Um, it went through Parks and Rec Committee, um, with no adjustments, so, uh, after a year and a half, I think, since it kicked off, there's a memo in your packet and the draft Bike and Pedestrian Comprehensive Plan. I made a note on the memo. Um, as you all recall, we are actually waiting to hear if we got the grant, um, that MPO submitted on our behalf with other municipalities, and we could do a really, really deep, comprehensive, active transportation plan, um, in a, in a year if we do get that. But, um, otherwise, if there's no questions, um, Bike and Ped Plan.
I think I asked you this before, but there's no recommendation for these projects where one has to be done before another. They're all going, there's no, we're not gonna be sitting there, like, why isn't this linked up?
The public work, we talked about it a little bit at committee. I don't know that there's all that much value in kinda putting an order to them just because of the way there's kinda always gonna be missing pieces. So, like, the, the Vilas project we, that we're just talking about is a nice little piece that connects, but it doesn't complete necessarily anything. So, we tried to take a holistic look at when they're all done. You can get anywhere, everywhere, walking or biking, but it's gonna be a hodgepodge depending on where you're coming from and looking to go to anyway, so. But, open to more direction. This thing's taking a while anyway, so I can crack it open again.
Yeah, I just don't want there to be, like, you get to the end of one bike path and then you have to wait four years until the next, the...
We had that discussion with the West Oak project, actually, where we put the path there and tightened the roadway up, that we, it's almost unavoidable sometimes, cuz that one, it does kind of end, and you're back to a sidewalk and/or riding your bike the rest of the way down West Oak or on West Lawn. But sometimes it's unavoidable. We do our best, and when you pick the end of the project, just try and, but...
You said this was approved by Parks and Rec Committee as well? Um, did they talk about the thing that we talked about in Public Works about the bike racks?
Nope, it was in there, so they...
It was in there?
Yep.
Is it called something other than bike rack?
It's way down. And I'm open to changing it again, too, if we, I think it was just a little...
Parking, okay. That shows the limit of my searching through documents. Okay, thank you. And again, this is a comprehensive plan, so we do sections as appropriate. You know, we're talking about putting in a loop, you know, over by McCarthy, for instance, earlier tonight. That makes sense, uh, where you're gonna tear things up. See, you're still gonna have some sections like that, but eventually, because of the plan, we'll actually start making those connections.
And with a plan, you're also eligible to apply for more grants, uh, because they can see where you're going and what your goals are, and that you, you know, thought about which projects, um, make sense for your community. So, um, I'm excited about this plan. We've been talking about it, you know, for, for a little bit, uh, on some various committees I've served on. So, I, I appreciate all the work that went into it, and looking forward to making some of these connections sooner or later, working toward it, chipping away as we can, so, thank you. Sure, with that, I would make a motion to approve the Bike and Pedestrian Comprehensive Plan as presented.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion second, then. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next, we have Parks. We have a discussion considered here for park development.
Uh, yep, we met back on August 22nd, and we talked about Bike and Pedestrian Comprehensive Plan. We also, I'll get back to the Bark Park in just a second. The Bachan Park tile wall by the, um, the Dream Park, there's some tiles that we were falling down. We've put them back up. There were some that broke, and we've tried to reach out to people many times, um, if they wanted to make a replacement tile if theirs had been the broken one. And I think that's, we did our last call, there's been a number of outreach regarding that. Uh, so, yes, the tiles did not go away, they're, they're put back up in the park. And then, back to the Bark Park, the Dog Park update. Uh, we did receive kind of some guidance to do what we can to get the Bark Park open this year. So, we have some funds in, um, our Park Development Fund that could, um, put small improvements in the park. In the memo, it listed out, uh, signs, picnic tables, trash cans. So, Sean is looking to get those things ordered, so we can get the park open, and use up to 15,000 from the Park Development Fund to purchase the equipment.
I got, I got a question. Um, so, the, the parking for the Bark Park, is that the Cottage Grove Elementary School parking lot? And how is that being?
No, it's right across the street here, there's a small park.
So, and there's access up to the park, okay.
At the end of Authentics, there's a small park, literally kitty corner from where we're sitting, um, that's available for it. So, the signage would...
I'm just wondering that if there should be a better signage, cuz, I mean, obviously, I didn't know. I'm looking at this thinking, I gotta go up the hill from Cottage Grove Elementary, why don't want anybody doing that? So, is there signage as a part of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Signage, yes, signage will be a part of that, for sure.
And we talked about some, um, education, too, because, uh, a dog should be licensed. If you live in the Village of Cottage Grove, you prove that they have their rabies vaccine. So, uh, also, social media and, um, outreach about the park, what its hours are, um, and, you know, how to get your dog license if you don't already have one, um, and then access and things like that that we could add in. There's a small dog area and a, a large dog, or small dogs that like large dogs.
On that, on a similar note, so, uh, dog fee, or dog licenses were due by, like, April 1st or something. Is there a possibility that if this park opens and people realize that they could take their dog here, um, but then they are, they didn't buy a license this year? Can we waive, potentially waive the fees, or the late fee? Not the actual fee, but like the late fee.
Yeah.
There's a late fee. As part of like maybe promotion of the park, and to know that you're supposed to be registering your dog.
So, part of the fee structure was, um, because of what we pay to Dane County, which then essentially part of it goes to Dane County, part of it goes to the state. Um, if they get it past that, that doesn't hold us whole, so we actually lose money. So, just so you're aware, if you do waive that $5 fee for the late license, we go backwards, but that's totally up to the board.
So, the late fee's only $5?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would be opposed to waiving that in, in light of that it would put us behind. If people wanna use the park, I mean, it's a very small price to pay in my mind.
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, using up to $15,000 from the Park Development Fund to purchase the equipment for the Bark Park.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second, then. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
Before we move on, can I just ask a question? Um, about the tile wall? When was that first installed?
Originally installed? When the park was built, 2009-ish?
Okay.
2010, yeah.
So, it, they fell apart after a dozen years or so?
Correct.
Uh, is it gonna last that long again, or is it hopefully gonna last, I mean, hopefully it'll last longer, but...
We're gonna do a better job of preventive maintenance on this, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. Uh, then we'll move to the Library Board. Cindy?
Sure, so the Facilities Subcommittee met on Thursday, August 22nd, um, and we, um, talked about our strategic plan, which we'll move on for full approval from the Library Board at our September meeting. Um, so I'd encourage you all to kind of go in the agenda and click on that and take a look at what we are proposing as goals for the next three years. The Facilities Committee in particular was really, is really focused on defining short-term space and interim space, and what that means for the next three-plus years. Um, and so, there's a memo in the Facilities Committee packet about how we're defining what a third space or a community space is in the absence of a full-scale library. Um, and so, it's just really important, when you're reading it, to note that this is not a collection, not a full-scale operations, but it is meeting more of the need of the community. Um, so there's some references in there, too, that I think are very interesting, but you can read that later tonight. Um, there's also three other documents that are linked in the agenda, which are starting to put us on the track of kind of what we're looking for. Um, so that is, we've kind of compiled a spreadsheet of storefront and small library data. We have some initial square foot estimates of what this community space, what we think needs to go into it, um, which puts us around 2,500 to 3,000 square feet, um, depending on number of kind of workstations and stuff like that that we think that need to go in there for the community. We also have a list of capital items that would, we would put, or furnishing items that would go into it. I'm just kind of starting to brainstorm, again, how we would use the space, how the community would use the space. Um, we had a closed session discussion, um, and we will continue at our next meeting, which we're gonna move back to the hour before Library Board meetings on September 18th at 5:00 PM. Uh, we're gonna talk more about capital and operational expenses in a proposed smaller space.
All right, thanks, Cindy. If there are any questions there, we'll move on to Law Enforcement Committee. I'll start, and then we do actually have a presentation discussed regarding the new police station, but I'll run through this real quick, and then we can jump into that, cuz that actually was most of our discussion at Law Enforcement Committee as well. Um, so we met on the 27th of August, uh, went through, uh, old business in regards to no parking at the cul-de-sac of Commerce Park Way, which is in the Commerce Park, right where, ends up right where the airport runway is. So, there was some concern brought up by the airport, so that's where we have decided to do that. Um, the Committee approved that, again, um, just the signs will go up soon as we can get, get them all arranged and everything else. There's still temporary signs there right now, I believe. Uh, new business, uh, there was inquiry for calls for service for Glen Grove Apartments. Um, Chief walked through those, um, nothing alarming there. Um, a number of, um, just, again, compressing a lot of folks into a small space. Uh, even apartment building, that's where the calls were related to, and he broke those down for us. Um, and then a bulk of the discussion for the Committee was the presentation for a couple scenarios for the PD Building Project. Uh, so we went through that, and I think Chief will carry us on that, uh, going on from there in a few moments. Went through reports, uh, for the month, prior month, nothing there that was, uh, again, of note. Uh, again, we're a growing community, the calls are going up a little bit here and there, and that's to be expected, but nothing to warrant any further digging into. Um, and then, uh, next time we meet, we'll be talking about 2025 budget. So, with that, Chief.
I'll, I'll pass on that. Good evening. Um, next to me is Mike Zilke from Enberg &amp; Anderson, and he's our project manager, designer, architect, the man that has all the answers. So, um, Aaron's gonna help me with the sharing of the screen, so hopefully that is showing up properly. So, at LEC, uh, basically did, uh, an overview, somewhat historical a little bit, and then into the building project aspect of life. As members here are well aware...
I can jump in. Which image do you wanna start with?
Can hold off on the images for the moment.
Okay, just let me know.
I appreciate it. So, the PD took, uh, occupancy at the Municipal Services Building in 2016. At that time, uh, they were estimating for a 10-year life expectancy for that space usage. Due to the growth of the village, we've surpassed that, uh, before the 10-year mark, um, and are in need of adding some space. They had looked at various options, uh, at one time doing renovations there. Those didn't address some of the needs, so, uh, with a former architect company, uh, when I started, they had me sit down and talk with them, and try and project out what a building need would be for this community going about 40 years out. And looking at the, the growth of the community and the anticipated growth, we anticipated that a building of approximately 43,700 square feet would be what you would want. But unfortunately, due to fiscal constraints, um, that's not a reasonable option at this time. Uh, so, then it was revisited to determine, okay, how do we bring it where it's fiscally responsible for the village? It's still making a large investment into the, the future. Um, and also, how can we build appropriately so when it is ready or it is needed, expansions can be done? So, Aaron, if you wanna throw up the, the comparison, um, document between the 43.7 and the 27.5, please? And basically, that was, uh, again, taking what a 40-year building would be, reducing it down, uh, targeting, trying to get a space that would be good for up to about 50... reducing it down, targeting, trying to get a space that would be good for up to about fifteen years before the village would have to make a continued investment in new expansion. And again, we all wish we had the crystal ball. We could work off of the numbers that we see as the village is growing. This village isn't gonna stop growing, and it's, it's a positive thing. We've all enjoyed it and we look forward to the future of that also. So we came down to a square footage of twenty-seven thousand five hundred square feet. Trimming in various locations throughout and trying to look at areas that the village could potentially get the best bang for their buck. I.e., I'll speak to like garage space. Doesn't take a, it takes an investment in garage space, but that's a lot different than if you're investing in interior walls and offices and things of that nature. So that's why you see some of the changes that you see. Then moving on from that one, we had, and again, this is the previous architect company, they gave us a rough cost of a building at twenty-seven-five. And that would be the next document. When you come down to the grand total at that time, in twenty-two-three dollars, they estimated it would cost about twenty-one-three at the low end to twenty-four-one. Again, twenty-three, twenty-one million three hundred thousand dollars to twenty-four million one hundred thousand dollars. We said, okay, we still have to look at things, we have to assess things. We then, the Village Board, determined that Enberg Anderson was going to be the architect firm that was going to be hired to design said building. We've been working with them and close relation, staying with that twenty-seven-five number as what we're targeting, but also trying to stay within that dollar amount also. So the next document would be the pre-designed preliminary estimate that you'll see at the bottom currently. And again, these are rough numbers, we know they're subject to change. But putting all the costs in there, you're looking at nineteen-one four-four five fifty-one to twenty-one eight-eight-six three eleven. Now, there are some other areas that costs could be added back in, i.e. related to some sustainability issues that still will keep us under even the original cost estimate that we had gotten from the prior architects. So with that, you'd previously seen four potential design layouts that were on display at Marketplace Days and on display at the Municipal Services Building and here at Village Hall. From that and some of the feedback and talking with the architect, we had narrowed, narrowed some of those concepts down from those four studies down to two studies. If you wanna pull that up, Aaron, please. Which currently, there's the board on display here at Village Hall. It also is out at Community Night Out for layout options of how a building could be set onto the current village parcel next to the Municipal Services Building. And within those layouts, some of the things that we were trying to look at is the green space and the utilization and making sure that was available for other entities of the village, i.e. parking wreck. And one thing I have to cover is, the village has the two parcels that are directly west of the Municipal Services Building, so all the way to Body Road. They don't have the third parcel that's to the north, that's still owned by a private developer and that's still slated for light industrial building construction. So we can't speak about that green space or the utilization of it. So again, we're just looking at where we're at in the parcels that we have. Out of these two options, you'll see a Study One and a Study One A that addresses the configuration of the building running in a north-south direction primarily. The difference between One and One A is truly the placement of the areas inside of that building. One thing to remember is, these are conceptual plans. They're not square footage, nor do they represent the actual space that the area is going to occupy. But it's an idea of the flow of how operations would be and how people would utilize it. Another part of this, one of the things that I brought to the architects is, I want this building, again, this is a serious investment for the village for long-term. I want this building to be something that the community is proud of and happy. And I don't want the community just coming there because it's a bad day. I want the community to utilize this. So you'll notice that on any of the plans, there's studies, there's a reference to a community. That is a community room, community meeting place. It also can operate as an alternate emergency operations center, potentially. If you're unaware, our current Emergency Operations Center during a large event is shared with the town in the basement of the Emergency Services Building. That space is not the most, how shall I say, adequate for when those type of events arise. So trying to optimize this investment so that we can get the best for the community as a whole. Some of the other questions that have come up is, what's a Sally Port? It sounds funny. For me, that's everyday language. I understand. People don't understand that. Truly, that's an area to be able to bring somebody that's in custody securely into the building with them not having access. I.e. drive the squad in, offload them, take them into a secure area within the Police Department versus taking them outside of the squad, out in the parking lot, walking them through a door. One, it's not a good image for anybody, and two, you raise the risk of somebody getting combative, somebody getting argumentative, trying to get away. So again, it is a safety factor. Going on from there, those Study, Study Two floor plan relates to a building that was laid out in an east-west manner on the property. Again, you'll notice that all the rooms internally have some of the similar labeling, things of that nature. Again, the flow is there. We brought to Mike and he hates me for it because I keep challenging him on different thoughts and ideas. Would like the flow of Study Two, but I don't like the way it laid out on the property itself. It pushed green space away from the Municipal Services Building. It truly, I think it took it a little away from trying to keep this as a community gem. So they came back, and Aaron, if you wanna go to the third study, they went and rotated the building actually to a north-south lay and then flipped it.
Is that one that's not in?
No, it's in, it is in there. It's Study Three. No problem.
Oh, yeah, okay, it's a separate file.
No problem. So this puts the green space again back more towards the Municipal Services Building, still usable. It also lays out, again, the way the flow is. We're not interrupting people moving amongst the community area around this. We then had some options or suggestions related to how this was laid out and questions about needs for the parking areas and things of that nature. There was a request, could you move the building closer to the roadway? Whether it's Progress, Bonnie, or both? And reduce the actual parking within the footprint on the property itself and potentially move it to street-side parking or potentially angled parking. One of the, there's a few concerns that I have there, not that it can't be explored, but the first and foremost is related to the intersection of Bonnie and Progress. I know there's a question about, well, can we reduce that intersection down? Can we make it not as wide and things of that nature? Again, the one dilemma that we do have is Body Road is still designated for truck traffic, traveling up to the light industrial areas that are both on the west side of the road and the property north of the village's property. So when you have semis that are traversing that direction, you wanna allow for adequate turning radius and movement of both traffic in both roadways. The other thing is, is the cost factor was not put in there for reconstruction of Bonnie Road or Progress Drive. So that's a cost factor that we don't have anything planned for, which would obviously increase expenses there. Now, to say it can't shift a little bit on the property to draw it a little closer, it is possible. But the other thing is, this area is not set up like a downtown area where you have all your storefronts that are straight right on the sidewalk. This is set up as a light industrial area, and that is the movement of the people and vehicles around that area compared to a walking all storefront going from a restaurant to a business to municipal building, things of that nature. So having a slight setback from the roadway is beneficial because it aligns with the other buildings that are within that same development area. So with that, I guess, am I missing anything there, sir?
No, sounds good.
I open it up to the board for discussion.
So within the attachments in the agenda, it went from the twenty-two-three study of kind of all-in, and then they cut, you cut that down with the probable cost, which is some of the attachments in the middle. And then you took, started with that plan and you cut it down even more, and that's what we're looking at now.
We've, we've targeted...
Or it's still the...
Look, we have targeted for the investment that the village is making in this type of building. The square footage is down to twenty-seven-five so that you're getting, get an optimum use of space for about fifteen years before you, again, going with that crystal ball, having the prediction that you'd probably have to start visiting, doing expansions and additions. So if you look at any of the plans that are in front of you where it has the black dotted line that says "future addition", that's where you're adding in the sixteen-two to get back up to that forty-three thousand square feet.
Okay.
But again, that's gonna be done when it's appropriate for the community and the department.
So you're basically, you're kind of doubling a little bit more than doubling your existing square footage. So what are, aside from the community rooms, what are like the new features or new spaces that you're acquiring?
Well, actually, some, some of the aspects that are getting changed are related to the secure areas, i.e. bringing somebody in. They're in custody, they're gonna be interviewed. They're being interviewed in the interview rooms within the secure area, not being walked through the front door of the Police Department, all the way through the Police Department to get to said location. The secure area also is being set up with, it references intake on the diagrams. That's your processing area, fingerprinting, photograph. Also, right now, within our agency, yes, we do run drunk drivers there using an intoxication machine. For those that have seen our area, you understand some of the limitations. I also have trustees there coming to look and I'll, I'll show them those. But that's all within that area also. So again, you can run those tests in that area also, like field sobriety in there versus, let's say it's inclement weather, you bring them back, able to run it there. If they're okay to be released, they're released. If they're not, we process them, then go from there. The other thing is, is looking at the locker rooms. We're at capacity now. I'll be moving out of my locker here before the end of the month so that a patrol officer has a locker in the near future. It also will expand the women's locker room. So as we continue, the agency continues to grow, we have the space to accommodate them. The command staff area, that is your supervisors' offices and things of that nature. So where it says "command staff", it isn't just one big office. It's all spaces in there, appropriately sized and built for future growth. The community police off, patrol officer area is, basically, that's the officers' working areas as a, i.e. like this sort of setting where they, again, are able to work in their, their area. The briefing area is, one, it works as both a small meeting area, but also as a daily. We're running our shifts, we're briefing our officers on the shifts that are coming off versus the shifts that are coming on and what's going on in the activity. The CID, that's Criminal Investigation Division, that office because we are going to encounter having to do more investigations. Things aren't getting simpler in life. As technology grows, so does investigations into those events and activities. There are two conference rooms referenced, both between the Command and CID. Purpose of those, again, they're set up so that appropriate conferences, meetings can be held. I'll say from a command staff level, having that room when you're dealing with personnel matters is quite essential versus, let's say, you move that into the briefing room and trying to have that conversation with somebody. On the reverse of that, the Criminal Investigation Division, they have a conference room because when detectives meet, they sometimes are talking about sensitive topics. You know, it doesn't need to be, everybody needs to have ears to it, things of that nature. And there's some times where those meetings are going on simultaneously. So is it a flip of the coin or does rank or seniority rule who gets to use the room and who gets to use the other space? There's referencing here related to, you see the word "soft"? That is a soft interview room. You have a victim of a crime, they don't need to be brought through the whole Police Department. They also don't need to be brought in to the security area to be able to take, take into an interview room. They need a place where they feel safe and comfortable that they can talk with an officer. That's what that relates to. So it's truly, a lot of things that we do in the space we have right now, I won't deny that, because we make it work. This is, again, planning for the future of the village and setting things up so that you don't have to revisit this in five to ten years on trying to go, oh, we should have done this, or, oh, we should have done that. Again, it's a substantial investment in the community.
And then when we get to the ten-year mark and we do need to adjust space, there is the future additions attached to the police station that will accommodate the growth for the, up to the forty-six thousand square feet. Or is that also... Or is that also, there's a, there's a future addition on the MSB? Is that, that has nothing to do with that?
That, that future addition was off of old, off of old plans that related to MSB when it was being looked at as a municipal campus, which that's, they just used that original diagram. And so that has nothing to do with the police department whatsoever, nor does it have any plan of future addition at this time.
I would maybe take that off the plan then, because it's, it is misleading.
That, that's what, on the, on the police side, shows future addition, the, the other placeholder there is just, I think it's listed as potential future addition, not planned, not set in stone, but if that building were to expand, that's the area that it would expand to. So, I mean, it certainly could be removed, but, yeah.
I would maybe remove it, all this project is ongoing.
No problem.
And then, and, and obviously, like, I love the community space aspect of it, and I was wondering if you've used equitable development tools in kind of thinking about how that community space would be used in a police station? I know that I, I have Girl Scout troops, and there might be families that would be really uncomfortable bringing their daughter to a police, because of interactions they might have had with, with police, negative interactions, which do happen. But that is, I think something that I would love to sit down and really have a discussion about and use some of the tools that Madison has to really define what that community space is like and what it looks like and how people would use it and how it's presented to the public to make sure that people do feel comfortable coming there, because not everybody does.
No, and completely not a problem. What I can, again, my past experience, I had a village hall and police department that were one building, and the boardroom there was the community space. And we used it all the time. We did art projects in that with the community. When we had Shop With Cop, that's where we'd assemble, and then I'll go shopping and come back and do packaging and things like that. So again, the, the whole, the police department is part of this community, and it's in a positive way. I know it sometimes gets the mark of being, we're here as the heavy hand, but again, that's not the agency that we run, nor is that the agency that I tolerate in any way, shape, or form. So again, we want this, you're making an investment in your community, this is what this is part of.
So what is the next step? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, you're good. I like that idea. So are you going to increase programming then? I mean, those ideas of working with the community.
We're already exploring with Park and Rec doing Citizens Academy. I would love to get into something related with, again, past experience, we had an art council, all four collaborating with them. Again, this, having the space to do it, if you've been at, and again, the building that the village has currently has worked well for its capacities, but the, the conference room that exists in that building, when I have a full department meeting, we are elbows to elbows and not enough space there, so I can't, I can't invite the community to come into that and have thirty people show up and have them feel comfortable. It's just not a doable situation.
Sure. I have an unrelated question. I think we talked a little bit about the fitness center. So is that, or the fitness area, will that be used just for leisure, or do you have, like, some type of?
We have an officer wellness program. I'll tell you, when I was actually in the hiring process here, I was impressed that this agency had something related to officer wellness. No, it isn't just slinging iron and turning everybody into muscle-bound giants, but it is actually meant to help the officers stay physically fit for the stresses of the do, of the job. And if you look, the, anybody that's done renovations to buildings, police departments in this county, has added fitness area as a component, again, for employee health, and I'll pick on, ingo on this one, it also helps with the insurance aspect of life and trying to limit the injuries and the costs that are incurred by the village.
And you feel like you'll be utilized?
Yes. I have officers now, I know I am not the finest example of svelte-ness, but I, I do have officers that are very keen on staying in shape for not only their health, but for the profession. And again, we have an interest, interest exam related to physical readiness that they have to pass, they have to pass one in the academy. Again, this is just a component we've learned through the course of life, prior to my, my starting. We've learned that if we can keep our officers healthy in all aspects, it's better for the whole community in the way they handle stress and how they deal with matters.
Thank you.
So I'm just looking at the layout here. So the community room is how many square feet? I'm just kind of.
It's about nine forty, nine hundred forty.
Okay. So when I'm looking at the square footage calculation, so that's the one that shows is eight hundred? Training slash multipurpose room under the shared public access?
It, it may reference that in there, and again.
So these square footages don't necessarily align with the current plan? Because it shows the restrooms, the public restrooms at two fifty each, which, when I'm looking at the drawing, it just doesn't make sense. So the net square footage works out, and you do have, in the public space, restrooms?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Most definitely.
Gotcha.
I would not do that to anybody here.
They're dispersed a little bit.
The square footages that are shown on the previous, you know, comparison and reduction don't align necessarily to what's in the, the layouts that we've got right now.
It does. The, the square footage that you see on that floor plan is about twenty-six thousand seven hundred, so it's a little bit under what we had.
The totals do, but not the individual spaces, is what I was saying.
The individual spaces that are aligned on there are approximate to what they are in that program, so they're equal to that. So if you take the bathrooms in there, they may not all be in one spot, so some of them.
The pub, the public ones show two hundred fifty square feet compared to the room at eight hundred, and it's not, that's not even close.
Correct, that's what I mean. They're dispersed amongst, there are some bat restrooms in the middle core, there's some in the locker room area, so they're kind of dispersed a little bit.
Yeah, I was just talking about the public space.
Oh, I'm sorry about the, I'm sorry. Yes, that is not exactly the same.
I'm just wondering what the next steps are?
Next steps, currently, we're working on the schematic design and trying to fine tune this project, process and project to be able to present a design to this board that you can be proud of and happy with for moving it forward from there, so.
I would just add too, and then selecting a date here soon for the public involvement meeting, there's two of them that are planned. The first one, likely late October, we have to settle on a, on a date to get some additional feedback on a, unlikely, you know, one or two of these concepts and get some, you know, just get some public feedback from there, which will then inform a site plan review process that could happen in December of this year, so that would be a plan commission in the board for further discussion. And then quarter one of twenty-five, there would be another public involvement meeting as we're nearing, I believe probably at that point, closer to a final design that would be, you know, soon to head, head out to bid, if I have any of that wrong, feel free to.
Matt, one more thing, I just want to add, so the Public Works and Sustainability Committee, there will be an agenda item on their meeting next week about revisiting the sustainability goals for the village and a prior resolution that had been passed. The goal there is to kind of get an idea of what we could potentially go after for grants and opportunities to reduce some of those sustainability add-on features for this building. And then once we have better direction at, after that committee meeting, that, that might be a way to reduce the cost of those components. And then, just secondly, just again, want to reemphasize that the municipal service building debt fell off this year, so starting next year, the debt service that was used to acquire and renovate that building is, is no longer being serviced by the taxpayers.
I was just elaborate on the next steps, is what you're seeing in the plan is more, they call them bubble diagrams, but this is a little bit more precise than that. We're starting to take that to the next level, to really figure out the spaces, to make sure we have the right amount of space on there. We're still looking at site plan layouts, so there's still options coming to look at that. We're starting to begin some massing the diagrams to show what it looks like, so you're kind of evolving this stage right now and making sure that those boxes are right and are appropriate, but things will push and pull, but, you know, our goal is to keep it at that square footage. If we can get better than the square footage, that's what we want to do, but that's kind of what this schematic design stuff does.
So, so just a couple other questions I had, real quick. The current space is how many square foot?
Twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-three.
And what is the general thinking, what we do with that space?
I mean, ultimately, that's to be determined by the, by the board, but the idea would be, is the existing office space, there's certainly components of the, of the PD, if left as is, would, would not be useful for existing operations for other departments, but there are considerable amount of workspaces there, you know, prob, between office space and workstations, you know, chief, I don't know how many are there right now, maybe, if you know that offhand?
Work, work areas, you've got one, offices, one, two, three, four, five, that you probably could utilize in some other capacity. The other, the other big issue is Public Works gets to move some of their equipment out of Bonnie Road into the municipal services building.
They did more, yeah, more garage space.
Which is the garage.
But the, but the workstations themselves, as, as staff positions are added, that maybe don't need direct customer, don't have to have face-to-face customer, positions that don't have to have face-to-face customer interaction, literally could, they're just docking stations, they can plug computer in and we, we could plug and play there.
Yeah, I mean, it's a couple years out, but it'd be good to have some sort of strategic thinking on what we're going to do with that space, be proactive, make sure we're using it in the best interest of the community. The other question I had is, that vacant land in the north, has there been any discussions on getting some sort of option on that land? I mean, it seems like a vacant parcel near all these buildings that we've got would, would be worthy of investigation, maybe it already has been.
We know the owner quite well, Andrew Honberg, so I mean.
Oh, Honberg, okay, okay, fine.
Yeah, so, so, yes, but as far as, you know, we're certainly not looking to add, we don't want to muddy the waters with adding costs to this project, but that's for future expansion, certainly, and, and some of the neighbors there, based on previous development proposals, probably would appreciate the village possibly owning that, but, you know, again, for other, for future discussion.
Okay. Then the last question I had is, the estimates that you've got is pretty high, it's a pretty big range. When I look at the cost of the building at four hundred twenty-eight dollars to four hundred sixty-five dollars a square foot, over twenty-seven thousand five hundred square feet, the garage itself is four, four thousand square feet. The cost of that garage space, I just built a building in, in Middleton, it was about ninety bucks a square foot for a garage-type space. So do you think that the blended cost is truly going to be in that four twenty-eight to four sixty-five, or is it conservative and there's opportunities as you refine this?
I think it's a little conservative at this point, but I know what you're saying, yeah, it's a heck of a garage for four hundred dollars a square foot, I'll give you that, so I think it balances out a little bit. I think the previous estimates were actually higher dollars per square foot, so I think that helps balance that out a little bit. And again, this is real, real early that they are putting dollars per square foot on here, so, you know, we hope to be better and look better at that way, but, yeah, but yes, you're.
And my kind of follow-up, my question, like Peter set me up, so you have a, an outside consultant that you use to help see what the market's looking like and make sure that our estimates are going to, you know, you never really truly know what's going to happen when you open up the bid packets and bids that come in, but, you know, to kind of make sure that we're close to the mark. Is that still like an ongoing process, or?
Yeah, good question. The, this was just a estimate at the pre-design stage, so in about five weeks, four weeks, we'll send it out to get a schematic design estimate, then we'll have one at DD and we'll have one at CD. So we're estimating every stage, you know, and what's built into this estimate is contingencies, inflation and all that, and as they start to go down, your contingencies start to go down too, so they start to narrow up. But it's a, it's a contractor that's doing it, so they're in tune with kind of the Madison area market, so that's a, a plus on our side for that.
And do you see our timeline, you know, putting out for bid at the opportune time, you know, will help us get the, the best bid possible? Are we still on track for that?
We are, I think, and sometimes when you get it earlier in the year is a better one to do it. We'd be more kind of before the summer to put it out, but I think based on the size of this project for this area, you will, we'll get the word out early enough that people hold the bid for that, so I do believe, and the size, you're going to get some bigger contractors that are really interested, interested in this, so.
Well, I think timing is key. I mean, winter conditions can add hundreds of thousands of dollars to the project, so I think, given that this isn't like a critical, it's got to be done by this date, it's a strategic move, it's two years out, we should really be looking at that timing so that we're not subject to winter conditions.
Correct. And I think the, if we can get it done sooner, we'd like to do that. I think when you don't put it out and you wait for the next cycle, then you risk the inflation costs, you have to balance those two, but if you get it out at the right time, they can get it, what they call buttoned up, a little bit quicker, so, but you're absolutely right, so it's borderlining on that part.
I have a lot of thoughts. I know some of you have already heard some of that, but sorry, I'm going to go over them all again. For starters, everybody's favorite topic, there's too much parking. There's just simply too much parking, and I don't say that, I'm not just saying that by vibes, literally, this map here, let me pull it up online so I can see it, forty-five outdoor stalls plus twelve indoor stalls, even if we had all our equipment and all the workers that they want over the next ten years, there's eleven stalls that are going to be empty one hundred percent of the time. That makes no sense. I think the public parking is, twenty-six stalls is too many, and I, I know, I think we need to move it, all those things he said that were suggested, those were all my suggestions, by the way. I think we need to move it closer to the street, because I think it's more inviting, I think it's less intimidating than seeing a, a police station setback. I know you said that there was, this area is zoned for a certain thing, but, I mean, zoning rules, those are, those are made-up rules that we set and we can change, so we don't really have to worry about the zoning rules. This is our building, this is our, our code, and this is our land, so we can change it. Is it okay if I share my screen? Anybody, is that all right? I don't, I don't, I cannot start screen sharing.
Can I ask a question about the parking? Is that the parking, is this the parking for the next ten years, or is this the parking, because it's, you've just put it in for the future expansion as well?
This parking, as it's laid out right now, is truly, as I see it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is what you're going to use for the long term.
This is the forty-year parking plan?
You could always add on if you need to, if the requirements are there, but yes.
That's kind of, that's kind of what I'm saying, is I don't think we should overbuild the parking, because we can just always add it later. Not to mention, if we add sixteen thousand square feet, based on our village zoning code for this, we have to add a parking space for every five hundred square gross feet, so if we expand by sixteen thousand feet, we have to add another thirty-two parking spots, right? So that's even more that we need, so we got to change the code so that we don't, this isn't just a parking lot.
For five hundred feet of office.
Of office, okay, so the garage part of that, so we wouldn't have to worry about that, but we would still have to add spaces if we expanded the office space. Let me see if I can share my screen now. Whoops, it's right there.
And, you know, Cameron mentioned the sustainability measures, I know he was talking like geothermal, solar, but, I mean, there are parking surface. solar, but, I mean, there are parking surface sustainability measures that could also be discussed too, correct? So, if we are paving paradise, there is options to put some sustainable measures in.
So, I'm just going to use this because this is the one I was able to Photoshop. I apologize for my Photoshop skills. I don't have any software as fancy as the architects do, so I, I did the best with what I had. But this is what it's, what it's got right now. I've got a bunch of parking up here, some over here, and then semi-private parking over here. Do you want to just explain what the semi-private parking is quick? Because I had that question, maybe other people do too, Chief.
Sure. So, the semi-private parking area is, I'll go back to, they take somebody into custody for drunk driving. They get processed at the police department. It's their first offense. One of the options they truly have is to get released to a responsible party. So, when that responsible party is summoned, they get to make that phone call, they show up at the police department, they'll be directed to go to the semi-parking area and pick, set individual up because they'll be released right out there and turned over to a responsible party. Or, one of those fun things that everybody, this time, not this time of the year, but starting next spring again, unfortunately, when you have those juveniles that decide to throw that house party and you end up with about twenty kids that have to be picked up, and the parents aren't available, or the responsible party's not available to pick them up at the scene, and they end up coming back to the police department, and we then have to release them out to their parents, that could be utilized for that. So, again, yes, did I exaggerate by twenty? Yes. But again, you understand, the concept is, we have an area where they're not going through the whole police department, where they're not being taken out in public type of thing, and they're being released out, because all the processing is going to occur in that intake area that's at that end of the building. So, literally, that's where that V stands for vestibule, that's where they get to walk out the door and be on their way.
Thank you. All right, so this on the screen is what one of the thing was, one of the plans was with all the parking. And I, what I think we should do is, we should compact it all down here, have some street parking here. Th- this way, we save all this space over here, which I think is a more prudent plan for the future, because then we have all this space that we can add more parking if we need it, we can add more buildings if we need it. I think this is a better plan, looking twenty, thirty years in the future, if we need more space for more buildings. Because if we go with this plan, we're not adding more buildings, we're going to end up having to buy more land, we're going to have to tear down some other building to rebuild it, whereas if we go with something like this, we've got more space that we can expand into. Go ahead.
And, again, that's why we have the study three also, looking at that one, because that does have space for what you're looking at potentially of expanding buildings or areas. And again, working with Mike and the architects, they're still looking at how, if we make some shifts in the way that building lines up on, on there, to address some of that. Is that truly feasible? Does it work the best for the village and for the community as a whole?
Yeah, and I mean, this does have some green space, but I mean, it's still, most of the square footage here is asphalt. There's, I mean, I don't know the square footage exactly, but just looking at it, there's more parking than there is built, excuse me, building. And I just, I think that's a poor use of this land. I think we should maximize the amount of green space we save so that we can use that for future expansion. Let me see if I can find my thing that I was doing. And then, as far as the indoor, so, I think the fitness area has got to go. I am just generally opposed to constructing an area that's essentially going to be building a private fitness room with public money. I don't think that's right. I also think we could cut these two individual conference rooms, turn this community patrol office into a shared conference room that connects to both those offices, and move the community patrol office area to where the fitness area is. I also, is this, T, is this toilet?
Yes.
Okay. I, I mean, that's, there's a lot of plumbing in here. I think that's something we could probably cut too. I think there's a men's room and a women's room right here. I don't know that that's necessary. I'm still not totally convinced on the community room, but I could be, I could be convinced on that. I think it's advantageous to have the department right here because if we needed more parking, we could just use the MSB for off-hour parking for events. And we also have all this area around Bonnie Road and Progress Drive that we could talk about turning into angled parking so that we just don't add more surface parking, because I don't think it's necessary. Those are some of the changes that I would like to see. I mean, if we end up going with this, I'm not voting for something like this. I'm, I, it's, it's too much. I'm trying to get to a yes on the police station, I've been wary about it, wary about it from the beginning. This is a non-starter for me. And I know you had to, you had to design based on what our zoning code is, but I'm not faulting you for any of that, but those are just some of the designs, changes that I would like to see. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that, or wants to tell me.
You know, I guess, I, I'm a big fan of reducing the impervious space. I mean, there is a lot of impervious space here, which, I mean, I've dealt with a lot of stormwater issues, and I, I, it just doesn't feel good. So, I agree with you on that one, Chris. You know, as far as some of the other areas, you're, you're only as good as your people, and so, having a, a fitness center for, for the officers, I feel is pretty important, not only for just general fitness, but also retention and having the, the features and the, the things that are important to the best officers that we can retain. So, that's just my two cents.
I talked to Chief about this earlier, and he said it, the fitness did not occur during shifts, it would be before, after shift. So, I just don't, I, I don't, I can't rationalize in my head, using taxpayer dollars for a private, what's a private, what is a private facility? They already have. We already have it.
Don't you already have a, a fitness room?
We do.
Right. So, it's duplicating in the police station?
The, the other thing, and I just, in July, got to attend a command course out at the FBI Academy with fifty other chiefs from municipalities of fifty officers and less. And one of the things that is out in the industry is actually going the firefighter route of allowing officers to use their lunch hours and their breaks to work out while they're on duty. So, you're right, I had previously told you, that was not something I was, I had ever thought about exploring, but I will tell you, industrial standards are changing as we speak, because both east and west coast are starting to allow those type of activities to occur during officers' break times.
And I mean, a fitness room is not just weights, it's, it's square footage that has to be lighted, and it has to be air-conditioned, and it has to be heated. So, I, I just, it's, it's an area that I don't, I don't find necessary. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. I don't think I have anything else.
Chris, I, I think I would support it, because I think this is a, a role that has an amount of stress, and being able to relieve that stress, you know, utilizing that with exercise, I think it's, is important. So, that's my thoughts.
I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I don't know why we're having a, we're, taxpayers are paying for an onsite facility. I mean, we have gyms in the village, we have sidewalks to run on.
It's all about retention of the best people, right? If it's something that they can get in other departments, as Chief is stating, and it's important to them, and they're good officers, that's a retention issue. So, I, I think the cost to heat, I mean, the building the square footage, we could do an, an analysis of what the savings is, but I think it's minimal in, in, in the big picture.
I think telling a good story too with the police station, like why this needs to be laid out this way, and you, we have potential security challenges, and we're addressing them by, you know, the, the Sally Port to the intake and how that all works, and the how, and I've seen, I've gone over there, and you've showed me the issues, and this solves that security problem. And I think, you know, if we do want to retain, retain the best and the brightest and a high-quality police force, there needs to be, you know, those aspects within this program as well. And the fitness station, or fitness room is probably part of that, the wellness program, the benefits, the, the salary, all of that is kind of one big thing. Potentially, is there, there's a duplicate workout facility in MSB then, so there's, the village will have two, or, I mean?
The equipment's got to move, so.
Okay.
So, no.
But now that you've pointed out the parking, it does seem maybe like there's a little, a little too much paving.
Again, this is just concept plans at this point. I think we need to see what the architects come up with. They do this for a living, so, and they're certainly getting feedback from the PD, so let's let that play out at this point. Great to have the opinions and have that input, but I think at this point, we have still conceptual, and we need to ferret that out a little bit more and get this further on, so.
In terms of where the building is situated, because Chris showed it's being closer to MSB and then closer to Progress Drive, I, I mean, I think maybe that, you know, thinking about it in like a twenty-year or forty-year facilities plan of the entire village, like does there need to be additional buildings built? Like with, to his point, you know, moving it gives us that land space. I don't have the answer for that, but it's something to consider.
I think, I think the architects can consider that and look at it, and they've already gotten that feedback. So, I think at this point, unless we have other points, we can probably move on from this. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next then, we have Fire District Commission.
All right, we met on Monday, the twenty-sixth, had a pretty quick meeting, approved the minutes. I, Chris and Lorraine, I do not remember, there was a decision made on the lighting replacements. I feel like we didn't have, we tabled that, didn't we, the lighting?
That's going to be placed in the next.
In the next budget, yep. The Fire Department response to private ambulance service calls was on the agenda that refers to people who have private services, such as a hospice or other types of private services that contract with a particular ambulance company, but then if that ambulance company needs support in moving that person, they call Fire Department. So, we'll be getting more information at our next meeting on what other communities are doing and what some ideas might be. We will also be furthering the discussion on the sale of Old Squad One at our next meeting. And we will be meeting next on September the fourth, Thursday, twenty-third.
You know, any other questions? Any questions for me? All right, then we'll move to Flynn Hall Committee. We met on the twenty-seventh, after law enforcement. Fairly brief meeting, again, the, the dollars for the budget, everything for twenty-four look like they're in good hands, so we approved the same budget for twenty-twenty-five. There really aren't any near-term building needs. There's been a lot of improvements, like with the, with the wood floors inside, adding internet, redoing, paving the outdoor parking area in the last few years. So, and HVAC and everything's in good shape. So, we approved a budget for twenty-five that's the same as twenty-four. So, and the only other thing to note there is the five-year agreement probably is up next year, so we'll have to have that discussion with the various parties that are in that particular agreement for that facility. So, if there are any questions there, we'll move on to reports from village officers, starting off with Larry. All right, thank you. Then we move on to a presentation from Matt Aaron regarding the, the development and planning.
Aaron will be sharing his screen here in a moment. We'll keep this as brief as possible.
Famous last words.
Yeah. So, this, this report is a annual report that, or presentation that Aaron and I provide. Most of this is likely not news to a lot of you, but it, it's good to document for the record and, and show all the, all the positive developments that has taken place since last September. So, it's kind of annual from September through September. We'll start off in tax increment district number ten, which is north of the interstate. This district was created in twenty-eighteen and will close, is, is set to close in twenty-thirty-eight, however, depending on future development and, and paying off any obligations and projects. It could be potentially closed sooner, but, but it has to close by twenty-thirty-eight. It's a three-hundred-acre TIF district, and most, most notably, as has been discussed a lot, is the Amazon Project, which, which takes up about half of that entire area. But it does leave us with several additional opportunities surrounding the Amazon Project for some pretty significant development. All told, you know, we're, we're hopeful this could be a three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-million-dollar tax increment district, which is pretty substantial, considering our, all property in the village currently is about one-point-two, one-point-four billion. So, this would be a big, big addition to the village's tax base. Go to the next slide, Aaron. The Amazon Project, if you've driven out in the last handful of days, they are mobilizing, getting the site ready, with hopes to break ground later this week. And once they start, they will go as quickly as they can, because as quickly as they can, it'll still be a couple-year build-out for the project. You could expect crews out there, weather pending fifteen hours a day, six to seven days a week for those, for those two years. And they're anticipating, this has stayed the same throughout the multiple years of discussions, a thousand to fifteen-hundred, a thousand to fifteen-hundred full-time employees are expected. There's ninety thousand square feet of office space in the facility. The target in between that thousand to fifteen-hundred will kind of depend on timing with, you know, this is the newest generation facility that they have, and there, there'll be a lot of robotics in it. A couple of years ago, they were probably projecting towards that very top end at fifteen-hundred. Maybe it slid back a little bit, but they, they will certainly still be within that. Could move on to TID Five, Aaron, which is more commonly referred to as the, the Commerce Park, but there's some surrounding development areas. The, the, the village was the primary developer of this, of this park, so, different from a lot of our other TIF districts that are privately owned. The, the village owned a majority of this land, it's about a hundred and thirty acres, which is, provides some good context of just how big the Amazon site is, not to belabor how big that project is, but very successful TIF district. Just about all of the land is, is now spoken for. There, there are a few additional opportunities that remain. The, the village sold land to Supreme Structures, which has, it's about two-and-a-half acre parcel east of Culvers, and they, that project has been stalled a little bit. They've been having struggles to find a ending user for that site, but they have re-engaged with someone, I think, a, a company everyone here will be excited about, hopefully if it, if it becomes public soon. But they are hopefully moving forward within the next several months on that. The, Andrew Homburg owns just south of the daycare on N, south of Quick Trip, a little over an acre parcel there, and then the Houston's north of the interstate, west of the Park and Ride, have close to eleven acres that. of the Park and Ride, have close to 11 acres that we were once hopeful for, for a hotel. I think there's gonna be some future opportunities for that, in addition to possibly uses such as additional convenience stores, which may not get people too excited, but with that also probably some, some restaurants to help facilitate some of the additional light industrial growth that we're expecting in that area. Having said that, those opportunities will have to come without the form of incentives. The village has passed our expenditure period in that TIF district, but all told, very successful TIF district, which speaks to the closure of it that we're looking at in 2026. Cameron is forecasting a 2 million-plus fund balance in that district, which must be returned to the various taxing jurisdictions proportionally. That means the village's share, you know, could be in the, around $700,000. That could go to bolster our fund balance, could be used for other one-time strategic uses and, and things of that nature. So, given, given that we're past the expenditure period and every, and, and all that comes with that, there still has been some notable activity in the park in the last year. Several projects that have been active and, and now, one community bank that, that's now finished and, and open is 6,000-square-foot bank. And Steel, which was a 65, it added 65,000 square feet to double their size, so 130,000 square feet now finished. So, excited to see that they expanded. That was always their plan, and we were hopeful for that.
Remember when that was the biggest project we ever had?
Yeah, it was, that was following the Great Recession. So all the, all the development activity that we see now that maybe some take for granted, we had to, at that point, we, we couldn't even give land away during the Great Recession to make things happen, but we were fortunate that Steel was, you know, happy to invest in, in the village and, and move that project along. So, they kind of were, were the first ones to kind of get the ball rolling for us. And then, the multi-tenant building that, that has Noodles &amp; Company and Dunkin' Donuts is now adding the Stoughton Health Urgent, Urgent Care Clinic in there, and should be operational yet this year. So, we'll pause for any possible questions at the end, but I'll pass it on to Aaron, who's gonna cover some of our other TIF districts and other things that we have going on.
Thanks, Matt. So TID 8, down on West Cottage Grove Road, roughly between the post office and CVS, is one of our newer districts, founded 2018, I believe. So not much happened the first four or five years, but all of a sudden, in the past year or so, we've gotten several projects. First Choice Dental, 10,000-square-foot dental office, part of a local chain of 11 other locations, is now open and operational as of the spring. Foundation's Dance, it's a 12-year-old business. They've been in the marketplace by the Pickly Wiggly for about three years, and now they've been successful enough to build their own facility, about a 5,600-square-foot building with two studio spaces. And they've had their ribbon-cutting set for this Saturday for quite a while, and I haven't heard that that's changing, so I think they're on the verge of getting open here shortly. New Tech Painting, currently located just a couple, couple buildings down the road from us, relocating into TID 8, be a 13,500 square-foot office and shop building with a separate garage building. If you're driven by there, it's very much under construction. And then right next to the New Tech Building, local developer, Zilki, has a approved plan for a 12,000-square-foot multi-tenant building. He won't begin construction until he's got some of that space leased up, but he's actively seeking that. It is approved for up to two drive-through lanes, so he's looking for some restaurant-type uses for that building. And some other projects beyond TID 8, the Dippin' Dog Daycare is just down the road from the MSB and the older industrial park. It took a while to get going, but it's up and under construction, 4,800-square-foot doggy daycare with an indoor pool, which makes it kind of unique in the area. Down in the Old Town area, the Houston's finished their second Drummond Tower building, basically similar to the, the first one that was built in 2006, also with 27 units, 55 and over apartment building, and that's also open and occupied. TID 9 is the area, kind of right around Village Hall and down, down the street, the NMBB intersection. So that's the previous site of TID 6, which will be closing soon, and then TID 9 has somewhat similar boundary, covering the same area. So the Authentix project has created a great deal of increment, because they didn't really get much of an incentive from us, just a little bit to move some power lines. So with some of that increment that's being generated, we're looking to facilitate some redevelopment on that northeast corner of NMBB. And we'll hear a little bit more about that later. As far as housing, that's underway or, or in process. The Shady Grove Development, number one on the plan here, on its way to getting built out. The original developer has pulled out, and it's now Tim O'Brien Homes. That's gonna finish that subdivision. They've also got approval for the duplex lots along the frontage. You can see some of that construction starting now as well. The West Lawn Fifth Edition, number two in orange on the map, getting finished off by Andrew Humberg. And then Quarry Ridge, number three in orange, also just getting approval for their last phase. Some of the future subdivisions are in yellow, so number one is the West Lawn Sixth Ad. Our understanding, Andrew Humberg would like to come in and start getting that plan approval process started sometime in the near future. So that would allow the completion of London Avenue out to Bus Road, creating another access point for that whole West Lawn area. The former Farm Golf Course, number two in yellow, is owned by Don Tierney. Local developer's done a lot of housing projects in Wanakee, Bristol, Windsor, owns that land. We haven't seen a, a concept or anything. I think his modus operandi is to kind of drive his tractor around and farm it for a few years and get ideas, and that's kind of the start of his design process, so we're awaiting some initial concepts for that. Number three in yellow is 2001 Realty. They've been actively seeking a development partner and are starting to get some traction on that, is my understanding. And then the Lakewood Development Team is looking at the Up Off Property, number four in yellow, out on Ridge Road. They brought a concept of the Plan Commission a month or two ago for a senior-oriented single-family development, a little bit higher density than the typical single-family in the village. Heyday is not on here. It's not, strictly speaking, subdivision, but they do still have their first step of their approval granted to them, and we're awaiting them to come in and finish off that process as well. Wanted to take a quick look at our net new construction data. Don't need to dig into the numbers specifically, but I think it's worth noting that out of the 28 cities and villages in Dan County, only Cottage Grove and DeForest were in the top five each of the last five years.
And if you add them all up, actually, we're a half percent above DeForest, so technically we're number one.
It's a competition, isn't it, for you, Matt?
And then in terms of equalized value, just another snapshot at some of the growth we've seen over the past several years. I think also worth noting here that the commercial has outpaced the residential in all of those years, which wasn't always the case here in the village. That's all we have. We're certainly open for any questions now, or any other time?
I, I guess I had a question going back to the Amazon project. In this, I really never thought about this, but coming out of the, on the north side of 94, there's two traffic circles. Are those being replaced with controls, controlled intersections to facilitate truck traffic?
Unlikely, but to be determined. They, they've completed a traffic impact study, and those final improvements will be determined by the, primarily the county, but in conjunction with the, the DOT. So-
So if there are improvements that are necessary, who's gonna pay for that?
Depends on, for, for the, Am, Amazon will be responsible for any of their increased, you know, any improvement that's necessitated through that study that would show what they need to do. They'll have to mitigate those. But the traffic impact study shows all the, all the key points. They grade through levels, called level of service, and they grade them A through F. And I'm probably getting out of my league here, so Josh, feel free to jump in, but generally speaking, things that, level of service of A, B, and maybe C, you likely would not make improvements for or require them for. Maybe when you're approaching a level of service C, you probably want to do further study to see if anything may be needed. The, all, all the, all the key points with the additional Amazon traffic, I believe, all showed levels of service of A or B. But that does not mean that there are not some improvements that will be required, such as a, a lot of, there's a lot of right-of-way out there, being county roads. You're gonna see a lot of roadway expansion, turn lanes, potentially that northernmost roundabout will probably get an additional turn lane added to it. But Josh, I know you're probably not prepared for it, but if you have any additional comments, feel free to help me out. But you don't have to do a full dissertation.
You are a good traffic engineer. I like it. A, B, C, D. He's, he is correct in a lot of what he said. You know, level of service D about is what they'll let you go up to before you need improvements. So A through C, you're looking pretty good. And it's just seconds of delay, you know, certain different seconds of delay where you hit a threshold that inconvenience for the public, and, you know, then you want to do something else, add a lane. Matt, Matt is right. All four entrance points on TT, two on TT and two on N, will have some additional improvements than just what's out there today. They're not just gonna cut in a driveway, but they're gonna put in right-turn lanes, left-turn lanes to get in and out of there. Right now, the county and the state are looking at the TIA. You know, they're probably, like Matt said, will need to be a few additional things done to that northern roundabout as part of that to improve it. And more to be determined.
So, but at this point, there's, they're gonna, there's not gonna be any impact to the village as far as what we would have to pay for?
No, nothing would be-
I, I didn't think so, but I was just sort of curious where that was at. Thank you.
Correct. So, so it would, depending on what's required, I mean, some, some of it's a bit of a negotiation then between, really between Amazon and the county and/or the state. So potentially, maybe strategically, the county or the state wanna, want more than what they could probably legally require Amazon to do. So it's possible that then maybe, maybe the county's putting in a larger improvement or something like that. I, I don't know. But, so, certainly so, discussions to be, be had on that, but the, the traffic impact study does not suggest that there should be, based on that study at least, does not show any real significant improvements that would be needed.
Other questions for Matt? Aaron?
More a comment. You summarized everything very neat and tidy, but I know that many hours, weeks, months, years have gone into making all this happen, so thank you for all of your work in making everything go smoothly and over really decades where we got to this. So thank you.
Thanks, Eddie. Well said. Anything else from anyone else? All right. Thank you both. All right, Cameron. Still with us?
I am.
All right, there you go.
We're gonna hope that the voice makes it through these, these last two things. So the first, first and foremost, the 2024 budget amendment, 2024.004, actually comes from the Library Board. I had worked with, kind of identified with, with Cindy and Tracy earlier in the year that kind of things weren't tracking what, what I thought they would. And, and so they kind of came to me and, and said, we, we think that we're actually gonna be spending more in certain budget line items than others. So what you see in front of you is, is kind of a, not asking for additional money, but just reallocating what they're spending their dollar amounts for. The, the Library Board does not have to come to the Village Board with a budget amendment like this, but again, are, is doing so from a transparency perspective. So my recommendation would, to approve the budget amendment as written.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget amendment as written.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, then? Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next item, Cameron.
Okay. So, and again, I'm, I'm hoping everybody can hear me okay. So this item I had added to the agenda, just to kind of reiterate some of the internal processes the village has, just to ensure that the board has the financial information required to make decisions, and, and making sure that that information that's brought to the board is accurate. So just kind of wanted to go over some of those procedures that I had sent in an email a little bit earlier last week. So, just a reminder, every department is responsible for reviewing their budget to actuals on a monthly basis. After that information is reviewed, it's kind of sent to me to be finalized. And then obviously, this board gets quarterly reports with just kind of high-level insights on, you know, if I, if I feel like things are tracking negatively. One of the things that I had been evaluating, and I had sent a couple links out last week that I will share, and I'll share my screen here, is there is trans, software transparency tools out there that the board could choose to invest in. So this is, this is just one example, and this is very customizable. So this, this, something like this would live out on the village's website. This is an example from the village of Mo'nganago. This demographic information and everything is, is kind of, would be up to the village on what they would be interested in. But really, what this does is provides with the public just some transparency on how, how is the village, you know, doing, you know, from a budget compared to their actual perspective. Are we on track? Kind of seeing historical information related to kind of how the village has chosen to spend the, the tax dollars. So I just kind of wanted to bring this to the, the village board's attention. There, there is a minor investment cost to this, but I thought it was important to highlight some other solutions that are out there. This software does work directly with our accounting software. And so, implementation of this specific module is not a huge lift. The budget book, as I had sent out in that same email, is a little bit more of a heavier look. And so this is essentially something I'm not recommending at this time, but another option to have the entire kind of budget be digitized and available for residents and others, kind of with text that, that could live on the website. You could set it up to have each department, you know, having different sections of the budget with graphing, graphics, and etc. So just because there are so many bells and whistles to this, and I did provide these links, I'm going to stop presenting on that specific topic- So, just because there are so many bells and whistles to this, and I did provide these links, I'm going to stop presenting on that specific topic and, and really just asking the board here to kind of provide some guidance. If you would like me to continue to look and you, at, at this tool and possibly present some budget options going on the future. Or if the board feels like the current processes that we have in place are sufficient, which they very may well be, I'm just looking to get some feedback from the board.
I think the more transparency, the better, and I also like the visual aspect of it, I think it kind of helps people, you know, figure out information with the, the visual, so I like it.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with that, I mean, in light of, in light of what, what's going down with the school district, I think it's really important, we do everything we can to be as transparent as possible. So, it'd be great if you, you said there's cost, would be good to understand, you know, kind of the, the cost and the impact on staff to actually upload and, and get the information presented.
Yeah, certainly, I can put that together for the budget presentations. I, I think it's a great tool. The, all of the tools that they offer through the whole budgeting process, I think, are kind of overkill at this point in time, but the, they call this their transparency tool. I do think provides some value, so I, I'll, I'll certainly, you know, reach out to the vendor and, and kind of get, you know, potentially even have her present at the, one of the budget meetings with us, just so you could maybe even get a demo on what, what the Village of Cottage Grove could look like.
Yeah, I guess my one question was how much staff time does it take to upload these modules?
So, because it is, it's supported, ClearGov is a supported product of Civic, it actually, they automatically have export files. So, the only thing that would be the, the huge staff burden would be designing what this page looks like. And so I guess I would probably lean on the Budget Review Committee, maybe like a special meeting or something to talk about, you know, what they, what they would feel would be important on a page like this. And, and ultimately, because we would have to design this somewhat from scratch, there's a lot of baseline and things that I would recommend, like also getting some feedback would be important, too. So, once it's, once it's up and running, uploading the, the information every month would take maybe 10 minutes. So, wouldn't, wouldn't be worried about that time commitment.
I also would support some type of communication to let the public know that this tool is available.
There, there is also an option here, and I, I guess I would want to work with legal on it as well, to, to have a, a comment section where we could engage residents on, you know, the certain budget items or certain projects and, and how they're, they're either running on schedule, not on schedule, et cetera. So, so we would just want to investigate, how could we properly, if, if we would implement a tool like that, how would we properly make sure that that was managed? The worst thing we could do is implement something that we weren't being responsive for, don't have the staff capacity to be able to respond effectively to.
Did you say this is updated every month?
I, so, so I close, I, so I would recommend updating the financial information every month because I close our books on a monthly basis. So, I wouldn't want to upload kind of pre-closed information. So, like right now, I have all of our books closed through July, August will be closed probably by the end of this week. So, we're, we're kind of always naturally about 15 days, you know, the goal is to have the prior month closed out within 15 days of the next month. So, that would kind of be, you know, maybe that, that Facebook reminder, flash reminder, you know, updated information is here, you want to go, go take a look at it.
Is there a way to do like a, a regular newsletter to just send out what the changes were or whatever?
Sure, like what the, what were the big changes for the month, yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it's, it's what you make it.
I mean, is there a way, do you know if there's a way to do it automatically, I don't know that, I don't want to put a bunch of man-hours into doing that every month or quarter or whatever, but if it's automatic, that would be nice.
There, there are some things that I've been, I think the problem is, is there, there's going to always have to be some level of review. I've started working with some of my peers on how to implement AI to be able to read financial data and, and see what it spits out. Obviously, we have to review that for accuracy to make sure, you know, as that information, or AI continues to get enhanced, you know, it produces a better product. But I, I, it certainly can, can predict like, oh, you know, i- if we basically had in the budget fuel was going to be X for the year at an average price of $5, if for some reason, price of gas was $6, and it, it could be able to read that data and provide insight essentially, if that makes sense. But yeah, it would, it just be dependent on what level of detail you'd, you'd be looking for.
I think we, if we move forward with this, we start easy and then add to it, it's, you know, you don't want to take off too much because we do need to understand what the impact is for staff after the initial investment is in the software. Because we don't want to overburden, you know, our precious staff by no means.
Yep, exactly, and, and I think that's why, I guess, from the Budget Review Committee perspective, I would, I would hope there'd be some feedback that, you know, they would give initial, initial guidance on what they'd like to see. And, and the reason being is a lot of this is budget-to-actual driven, so we could maybe start there.
Sounds good. Think you have enough traction there, Cameron?
Yep.
Okay, cool. All right, then we'll move down to Communication, Miss Williams Business, and start off with consideration of vouchers.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers as presented.
I had a question.
Can we get a second first and then?
Go ahead.
Have a discussion?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Otherwise, I'll forget.
Yeah, I guess I, I mean, it's, it's, it's a big voucher month, and I guess, I'm a little unclear, so the MRO remaining principle on CG Commons was 2.1 million, and there was this, what, what is that, Cameron? Can you provide some context?
So, as I'm working on closing the, and so, there's outstanding development incentives related to TID five, so as we're looking to close that district early, Greg and I have been working on strategically identifying certain agreements to kind of pay off the remaining incentive. That, that's just what that is, that is a developer incentive related to a project in, in TID five.
MRO is municipal revenue obligation, so Cottage Grove Commons have met their obligations on tech, on assessment guarantees. I, I don't recall off the top of my head, I don't know if you do, Cameron, but their, their total, total project was north of, north of 30 million between both, between both phases, and, you know, that, that required them to have, you know, those mixed, mixed-use buildings that had the retail and office components and things like that to it. So, they, they, and, and other public improvements that they put in, like Windsor Street, and so the, the incentive goes to reimburse them after, after they've completed the project, so that's what, that's what that is.
So, so how do we, how do we get, for example, the 2.1 million back, what's the mechanism that, that, that those, those dollars flow back to Cottage Grove?
So, so.
We've already got them.
Yep.
We've.
Okay, that, that was my question, so that basically is returning advanced money based on what?
We, yeah, we, we only make the payments once they produce the outcome.
Okay.
So.
Essentially, we have the improvements and, and that's then covered. Got it, okay, thank you.
Great, that, no, I, I appreciate the question on it because this is an unusually large check run. You will notice all the TID five incentive payments are made on this, in this, on this check run, so that is important to note.
And, and so all these are being paid off, and, and we'll, we'll still end up with north, north of a $2 million fund balance in the, in the district, yeah.
Any other discussion? All right, good question. With that, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, anybody abstained, motion carries. Correspondence, I had a few things around the school, just people asking about fund balance, good questions about that. Had someone ask about a dog issue, which turned over back to the PD. So, that's, and then I know that the Village Board got some other ones about from the school, related to the school as well, so those ones I'm aware of, if anybody else is aware of anything. All right, then we'll move on to community events coming up. Kids are in school, what's coming up? We know we have the block party in October, but that'll approach us very quickly on the 12th.
It's the All Community Read, books are available tomorrow at MSB for the Cottage Grove book selection and author talk, which is in October as well, but you can get your book tomorrow.
Anything else, anyone want to highlight? All right, future agenda items, we'll have something from plan, hopefully, anything else, Matt, that you can think of, more budget stuff? Yeah. All right. With that, then, I'll start rattling off this stuff, and then somebody can second after me. We have three closed sessions for this evening, the Village Board would like to go in closed session regarding potential land acquisition, TID number nine. Village of Cottage Grove will enter a closed session pursuant to San State Statute 19.85, Prince E., delivering and negotiating, purchasing public funds, properties, investing in public funds, conducting of other specified public business wherever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Is the rule called in?
Doll.
Aye.
Gage.
Aye.
Cal Nelson.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Stoa.
Yes.
Valencia.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye. Next, then I'll move to go into closed session to establish negotiating position relative to a possible acquisition of library space, the Village of Cottage Grove will enter a closed session pursuant to San State Statute 19.85, Prince E., delivering and negotiating purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, conducting of specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a second?
Second. Oh, go ahead. Williams.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Stoa.
Yes.
Murphy.
Aye.
Cal Nelson.
Aye.
Gage.
Aye.
And Doll.
Aye.
Finally, a closed session regarding to employee compensation and benefits, the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board will enter a closed session pursuant to San State Statute 19.85, Prince E., considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibilities. Is there a second?
Second. Cal Nelson.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Stoa.
Yes.
Doll.
Aye.
Gage.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye. We are in closed session.